Hugo Perdomo, present.
Present.
Joan Carmel, present.
Present.
Arthur, okay. Joe?
Joe Mahoney, present.
Marilyn?
Marilyn Vega Torres, present.
And Janice Tatarca, present. We're also going to, we have in front of us minutes from the prior meeting. I would like people to review and to make a motion to approve the draft minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the draft minutes?
I make a motion.
Based by Marilyn, second by? Second by Arthur, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Hugo, you're gonna be leaving us. We'll be, we'll talk to you later. Couple of things again as we're working on. We have a couple of cases that the planning board hasn't finished with, so we're going to be continuing those to our October 14th meeting. So do I have a motion to move cases 2025-10 and 2025-11 to the October meeting?
I make a motion.
Arthur, second. Marilyn, all in favor?
Aye.
And then, because we know this is gonna be a long case today, we didn't want people hanging around for stuff they didn't need to do, so we're going to take a number of cases, move them to the planning board, so that we, for their meeting on the 23rd of September, and then they'll come back to us on the 14th of October. And that would be cases 2025-15, 2025-16, 2025-17, 2025-18. So they will be continued and moved directly to the planning board. Do I have a motion for that? Motion, Arthur?
Second.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So the first case in front of us is, whoops, case 2025-07100, Justin Drive, Boston Provisions LLC, for special permits to establish a seafood processing and distribution facility in the industrial district and extend the use into the adjoining lot in the Naval Hospital Commercial District. John, this is going to the planning board. Can you please tell us what they said?
The planning board recommended approval with conditions.
Okay. So gentlemen, please introduce yourselves and talk about whatever changes you made since we last spoke. And I know I have a number of questions, so why don't we, you first talk about the changes that you've proposed in your proposal.
Thank you. My name is Michael Garrity. I am the founding partner of Boston Provisions. Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. My name is Mike Monas. I'm the CEO of Boston Provisions.
And David Midland, representing Boston Provisions. My clients-
Keep the door open, please. Keep the door open, please. Thank you.
My clients have a relatively brief presentation that doesn't only address changes, but really lays out the, the operation without talking about the business, as they've already done several times. We thought it was much more efficient if they'd lay out the operation, hours, trucking, et cetera, et cetera, which I think will clarify the, the operation for everybody.
Thank you. And remember to talk into the microphone when you speak. If you have to get up, you can walk with it, so, okay?
Thank you. And, and also with us is a representative from the Landlord Westbrook Partners Associate, Nathan Langlis, who is one of the team members working on the site surveys that we have up on the screen today. He'll be here to answer any specific questions as it pertains to the master plan for the site. Okay, here we go. This evening, our request is clear. Approval for a special permit allowing seafood processing and distribution at the proposed Boston Provisions facility at 100 Justin Drive. Boston Provisions is a premium food distribution company made up of three divisions: Savonore's Butchery, Wolf's Fish, and a specialty gourmet division. Seafood processing represents less than nine percent of the footprint, just 6,830 square feet at the facility, which is the reason we are here today. The majority of our operations in the facility will be focused on butchery, distribution, and specialty foods. My goal tonight is to provide clarity. I want to take you through what a day at Boston Provisions looks like, so you can see firsthand how we operate. I will then welcome any questions and provide answers. Boston Provisions is responsible to being a good tenant and a good neighbor. We are here to invest in Chelsea, to create stable jobs with strong benefits, and to operate with transparency, accountability, and care for the community. At its core, Boston Provisions is a food distribution business. Our operations are structured, predictable, and centered on quality and efficiency. Starter of the day, our team members arrive in the morning to prepare customer orders. These involve, this involves receiving product, breaking it down as needed, packaging, and staging it for delivery. All work is done in a clean, temperature-controlled environment that follows strict food safety standards and guidelines. Processing activities. Savonore's Butchery, the meat division, handles premium meats with skilled butchers cutting and portioning orders to exact customer specifications. Wolf's Fish, the seafood division, manages seafood processing, focusing on hand filleting and portioning and packaging fish in sealed containers for delivery. Specialty Foods Division organizes gourmet dry goods such as cheeses, finishing oils, herbs, that are meticulously packed and distributed alongside meat and seafood on our fleet of trucks. Order fulfillment. Orders are built carefully and staged by route in our distribution area for drivers to pick up, load their orders onto their vehicles, and head out for deliveries. At the end of the day, once deliveries are complete, the focus shifts to cleaning and sanitizing the facility. Floors are scrubbed, equipment is washed, and all product is secured in cold storage. Nothing is left behind to cause odor or waste issues. In short, our daily operation looks much like a modern, well-run food distribution company, similar to companies that exist in the surrounding areas, for example, Paul Marks. It is orderly, professional, and guided by the same commitment to quality and safety that you would expect from a premium food provider. Our schedule is organized into three shifts to ensure smooth operations and steady workflow throughout the day. This structure allows us to serve our customers efficiently while minimizing disruption to the neighborhood. First shift, 6:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This shift focuses on early production and preparing orders for same-day delivery. Staff enter the facility at 6:00 AM to ensure staging and preparation happens first, and outbound traffic is limited to normal morning hours. Second shift, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, overlaps with the first shift to support additional production, packaging, order fulfillment. Outbound trucks depart in stages between 7:00 AM and 2:00 PM, with the majority of deliveries already on the road by early afternoon. Third shift, 2:00 PM to 10:00 PM, concentrates on receiving goods, restocking, preparing orders for the following day, and thoroughly cleaning and sanitizing the facility. This is not an overnight operation. All activity concludes by 10:00 PM, leaving the facility quiet overnight. This three-shift structure keeps operations consistent, avoids bottlenecks, and ensures we remain a professional, well-managed neighbor in the community. Now, I'd like to talk about trucking, because it's been a hot topic. Boston Provisions currently operates and owns a fleet of 23 refrigerated box trucks and vans. We do not own or operate any tractor trailers or semi-tractor trailers. Over time, this fleet may grow to no more than 30 vehicles, which is the maximum capacity that the site can support. Each vehicle typically enters and exits the site once per day to make deliveries across Massachusetts and neighboring states. In addition to our vehicle fleet, the other trucks that you will see coming in and out of the facility will be suppliers, vendors. We expect and intend- of the facility will be suppliers, vendors. We expect and anticipate 10 to 20 deliveries daily, primarily in box trucks ranging from 10 to 36 feet. On occasion, larger tractor trailers may arrive for long-haul shipments from suppliers across the country, but those deliveries are scheduled, coordinated, and typically done outside of peak traffic hours to reduce idling time and receiving time. On a typical weekday, about 50 trucks and vans will service this site, between our fleet and vendors, most being small vehicles well-suited for urban deliveries. On Saturdays and Sundays, the traffic is expected to be 35 to 25% of weekday traffic, because the hours in the production is limited. The site previously housed Signature Bread's and, prior to Signature Bread's, Pillsbury. After speaking with representatives from Signature Bread's, it was stated that typically a day would involve 40 to 50 large tractor trailers daily entering and exiting the site. Their former president has stated clearly that Boston Provisions' operation with smaller trucks and much fewer tractor trailers will have less impact on traffic than their prior use on the industrial site. There are currently two ways to access the building, through Justin Drive and Commandant's Way. As you can see here on the screen, Justin Drive on my left, Commandant's Way on my right. While we cannot commit to using only one exclusively, our goal is to work with our neighbors to mitigate traffic and minimize disruption for everyone. To support this commitment, we will incorporate preferred routing into driver training and vendor instructions, install onsite signage to guide vehicles towards Beecham Street, Chelsea's designated industrial corridor, whenever possible. In addition, to be respectful to the butters in the Axis Hill Apartments, we will limit use of the Beecham Street-Justin Drive entryway between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So to repeat, our intent is not to use that-
Don't do that again. This is, you can have your chance to-
Just to be clear, so we have two ways to enter and exit the building. We don't, we will not be using the Justin Drive entrance and exit during the hours of 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM to cause, those are what I would consider to be peaceful, quiet hours. In addition to that industry standard, we will be enforcing strict no-idling, no-staging policies, so trucks do not linger on public streets or in our driveway and loading docks. Our fleet is currently composed of diesel-powered refrigerated vehicles, which is the industry standard. That said, we are actively exploring lower-emission alternatives, including retrofit, repower, and alternative fuel opportunities, and we are open to partnering with the city and community organizations to modernize responsibly. At Boston Provisions, we recognize the concerns about odor, trash, and water contamination. Are among the most important issues for us and our neighbors. Our approach is to address these proactively with state-of-the-art infrastructure and strict operating procedures. Odor control. The entire facility will be equipped with a state-of-the-art carbon filtration system designed specifically to eliminate odors. Combined with strict standard operating procedures for cleaning and constant cold storage temperatures throughout the facility, this ensures food products are always contained fresh and odor-free. In fact, Boston Provisions is no different than a modern supermarket with meat and seafood departments, just on a larger scale. When the proper systems and best practices are in place, you can achieve an environment that is perfectly habitable, clean, and comparable to what customers experience in grocery stores every day. Trash management. All waste will be managed in a fully enclosed trash room inside the facility, preventing odors or exposure to the outside environment. Routine, scheduled pickups will ensure no accumulation of waste. This system is a step above industry standard and designed to protect our neighbors from any nuisance. In regards to water mitigation, water waste mitigation and management, the entire facility is on a closed system. All wastewater is treated before exiting the building. For truck washing and exterior operations, trench drains will be installed outside the loading docks to capture any runoff as a result of washing down trucks during the daily SOP for cleaning the vehicles. That water will be redirected into the facility's internal water treatment system before being safely discharged into the city sewer, fully compliant with state and city regulations. In summary, we're investing heavily in infrastructure and protocols that will go well beyond the minimum standards. Our goal is to ensure that the concerns about odor, trash, and water are not just managed, but fully mitigated, so that Boston Provisions operates as a clean, responsible neighbor from day one. With that, I, I'd like to open up the floor to any questions specific that you may have.
Questions? Could you, I, I do, could you show me, do you have a description or something that shows the internal operations or how it would be set up?
At the other slide, oh, sorry, John, John, there's another Adobe file. If you, if you go to the USB folder, please. Thank you. And if you could just hit that X for me, John, and then maybe zoom in. So this is approximately one-half of Floor 2 of 100 Justin Drive, roughly 80,000 square feet. This is the front of the building. This is where we'll have our loading docks. The two bays at the end will be dedicated for trash that goes into the enclosed trash room. If I'm drawing a line from here down, this is our staging and loading dock area. When I talked about orders are going to be prepped, moved to staging, to be loaded onto trucks. All of the production is happening in these rooms in the rear of the building. The reason this room is called out in blue is we wanted to highlight the purpose why we're here. This is the seafood processing room. So this room is roughly 8.5% of the total site. Going right to left-
The total site or your part of the site?
Our total, our total. So it's even less than the total site.
Okay.
It is 8.5% of the total square footage that we're leasing, which is 80,182 square feet. Moving from right to left, you have the different divisions. So think of this, Boston Provisions is, it's an aggregator of multiple businesses under one roof to maximize distribution, to reduce emissions of having multiple vehicles, to be more sustainable. Moving from right to left, we have seafood processing. We have home delivery, where we offer both our meat and seafood products to consumers around the nation, shipping all the way to California. Then we have the meat division. We have a dedicated room for dry-aged meats. If you've ever been to a fancy steakhouse, I'm sure you've seen that little glass cabinet with very expensive steaks. This is just that on a, on a commercial level. To the left of dry-aged, you have poultry. Then you have pork, and then you have specialty dry goods. Each of these rooms are going to be independently temperature-controlled, independently separated when it comes to drainage, and it's all by design, because each of these divisions have their own regulators. The meat, poultry, pork, that is all gonna be falling under the USDA, FDA, whereas seafood, you have, you have the FDA, you have, you have HACCP, the Division of Marine Fisheries. So every, it's, think of this as multiple businesses operating under one roof. All of this space, the, the distribute, this distribution, the staging, the loading dock, that's all shared resources for these divisions. In the middle of the, the loading, staging, and the production rooms is this, this corridor, and you might see these little tiny squares with lines through them. Similar to how we designed the processing for each of the divisions, each of the divisions has their own segregated coolers, so there's no cross-contamination of product. So the seafood division, these squares with the lines, these are pallet racks. So each division has its own segregated coolers with pallet racks to stage product. All of the product is coming in in corrugated boxes. We're not, we're not bringing in live animals to slaughter here. We're, we're further down the distribution channel. Everything's coming into us semi-processed for us to lightly fabricate. On this right-hand side here, starting from the far end, moving down to here, this is our freezer. So you have multiple entry points into the freezer. The freezer's gonna hold approximately 202 pallets through a pallet rack system. In front of the freezer, you have the dedicated ice room. So everything here, specifically on the seafood side, in order to maintain the quality of the product, you have to maintain cold chain of custody and, and ensure that it's kept at that temperature at all times. So when product is received, it is QC'd, it gets re-iced, and then it gets moved into its respective cooler. In front of the ice room, this is the dedicated trash room. It's roughly 518 square feet. That's gonna be the enclosed trash room that we discussed. On the left-hand side, this is going to be mostly admin and flex space. So you have some office rooms, break rooms, showers, employee locker rooms, men's locker room, women's locker room. And then up, up above these offices, we have a test kitchen, which is gonna be used for training staff, bringing in customers. And if we get a new product, or we're working with a new local farm, and we wanna showcase it, we can bring in a customer, we can have our in-house chef prepare that product, teach them how to utilize it in their restaurant, yield cost, and it's another value add to customers. In addition to the test kitchen, we have a test kitchen currently at our facility on the Boston Fish Pier. We utilize it for a lot of community events. We bring in people, we work with, I'm trying to think, it's, there's a, I think it's not, it might be grassroots. It's somewhere in the North Shore where it's a, it's a association that takes underprivileged youth that wanna get into the world of hospitality, but they don't have access or means. So we partner with them, where we bring them into the kitchen, we teach them real-world skills. So we're gonna use this test kitchen for a plethora of ways.
I just wanted you to clarify the semi-process. I know that you mentioned that you're not gonna be slaughtering anything. Can you elaborate on the semi-process?
Yes. Think of it, for, for instance, we're coming up on Thanksgiving, right, and one of the, the biggest items that restaurants are gonna be ordering right now are turkey breast, right? We're, we're not, in order for us to provide turkey breasts to that restaurant, we don't go to a farm and buy a whole turkey with feathers on it and with the guts in it, okay? We will be buying that turkey, sourcing that turkey from a upstream supplier that has already done the heavy production of that, that bird, de-feathering it, taking out the innards of that bird, cleaning it. So when that bird is arriving to us, it's what they call in the industry to be cleaned, and it's coming vacuum-sealed. That bird would arrive in a corrugated box. We'd be then grabbing that corrugated box out of the storage for the meat. It would go into the meat production room, and it would be maybe, so it's gonna make breast, you're gonna fillet it in half with a knife, you're gonna further break it down, and you're gonna take those portions, seal that, vacuum-seal them, and put them into a, a new box to go out to the customer. In regards to seafood, think of it, so we're receiving, taking the most popular item, salmon. That salmon's already coming to us. It's been, it's been killed. It's been gutted. Sometimes it'll even be scaled, sometimes it'll even come head off. So imagine that if, if you, if anyone here has gone fishing, or you're cooking at home, you, you're starting with that whole piece of fish. When we say light processing, it's literally taking that product and manipulating it into smaller products. 98% of what comes into this facility gets used. So that should elaborate the fact that if there's such limited waste, right, that that 2% is really bones, that's the heads of the fish, if we bring in fish with a head. If there's such limited waste, that means that a lot of that upstream product, fabrication has already happened before it's arrived at our facility. This, I hope that makes some sense.
Yes, thank you.
You mentioned in the past, relative to the, this being a special building because of its three levels. Can you explain again why the three levels?
Sure. Most modern facilities or new industrials, industrial buildings being built are being built with clear height ceilings of 25 to 40 feet. For our business, we don't utilize the airspace in a factory. We utilize ground space. So there's no reason for us to take 60,000, 80,000 square feet in a building when we can't utilize that overhead space. So this building is unique. It's, it suits us and it fits our business, but not many businesses, including FedEx, United, Delta Airlines, Amazon, that utilize the high ceiling heights to store product. Because of the weight of our product, the, the quick turnaround of the product that we have, we do not have to store items for long periods of time. We turn our inventory every 36 to 48 hours within the facility. So we need more staging space and more flat square footage than we need cubic square footage in terms of ceiling height. So it's, it's counterproductive for us to go into a building and pay for high ceiling heights when we can pay for more square footage on the ground surface rather than on a height basis.
In addition to what Mike just elaborated on, we're not, not only will we not be utilizing that excessive ceiling height in some of these newer facilities, we would all, this entire facility is temperature-controlled, so we would effectively be wasting a great deal of resources cooling an environment that is not being utilized in the day-to-day operations. So this building is very uniquely suited for our needs.
Thank you.
Can you talk a little bit about the air filtration system?
Yeah.
Can you, yeah, explain it?
So I, I'm not sure, you know, we, we did host a few tours for members of the planning board and the zoning board and city councilors at our existing facility. I'm not, I, excuse me-
I just want the audience to-
Yeah, I just wanted to give some context. I'm not sure if, if you specifically were present on any of those tours, but a lot of the infrastructure, specifically as it relates to seafood, is, is very outdated. You know, the building that we're in right now is roughly 30 years old. And if you're one of the individuals that, that were able to go on that tour, you'll notice for a building that's, that's 30 years old, there is not a extreme odor nuisance or a lack of air quality in that building. And that is relative to our strict SOPs in regards to cleaning the facility, as well as ensuring that the entire temperature, the entire ambient temperature for the building is, is maintained between 32 and 40 degrees. If, if you keep that temperature, it tremendously slows down the process of degradation. Furthermore, we're constantly turning over our inventory. One of the things we're really excited about in this new facility is to be able to build this from the ground up and actually take ownership and pride in it, is that we will be installing a state-of-the-art carbon filtration system. This is something that you would see in, in any, any new manufacturing processing facility, which essentially, if you look at the vents that are in this building today, the, the air is passing through these vents, and then it's being circulated throughout. When you install the carbon filtration system at various access points where the air is flowing in, it is, it is being faced with carbon filters, which is used to treat the air and mitigate and eliminate any VOCs, volatile organic compounds, before it's redistributing that air. So we're really excited about having that.
Thank you.
Again, so I, you said that 8% of what you, you're planning to use here is fish, but is that, is that a similar proportion of 8% is what your fish business is versus your meat business and your dry goods business, or?
So if, if you break the divisions down between meat, seafood, home delivery, and dry goods, the businesses typically will end up on any given year, subject to impact on seasonality and availability. Each of those divisions should equate to roughly 20% of the business. If you look at, if you look at the- If you look at, if you look at the, the meat, so if we go back to this, and if you look at the, the seafood space here, which is only 8.5% of the total facility, is 6,800 square feet. This meat room is 58, dry age 1,000, poultry 1,000, pork 1,000. When you add up all the, the complimentary meats together, it's very similar in size to the seafood. Like Mike was saying, what's most important to us is space, it's logistical space. It's space to move product around and stage orders. So there's a tremendous amount of space here that isn't used for processing. It's just used for receiving orders, staging orders, and loading them onto trucks.
Tell me, talk to me about your delivery process, where it is, how it works.
Okay, so let's, let's envision that, it, it's 6:00 AM. And our, our workers, everyone is in their respective divisions. Order comes in for 100 pounds of ground beef, order comes in for 100 portions of salmon. The orders are gonna make their way through a computer system to the respective...
No, but that's their leaving, what about when it's getting?
Oh, when it's getting, when products are coming in. So we have our, our dedicated base in the front of the building. Products, we're gonna try to, you know, nothing is ever perfect, but we wanna try to segregate receiving to the far-right bays, because we have this, this corridor here to work with. Trucks would pull into here, into one of these three bays. Product would be QC'd if required to get re-iced, it would get re-iced. And then it would make its way into one of the coolers. It would, you would use this central corridor, this, or this central corridor, or if it's a frozen product that's being received, it would make its way up this corridor into the, the rear of the freezer for meat, or to the front of the freezer for fish. But in an ideal state, you know, nothing ever works out the way you, you plan when you... But deliveries would ideally be in those three bays.
And it's just three bays that you have?
Oh, no, in, in total here, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13 bays, two dedicated for trash. So that leaves 11 bays available for distribution.
But three, all right, but three would be for delivery?
Yes, we'd like to dedicate three for receiving.
Okay, now, so now walk me through the, you've got your 100 pounds and...
So, you know, products are manufactured. And the way that all these coolers work are, think of it almost like a U. So raw materials would be going into this cooler for seafood. They would requisition that whole piece of salmon, they'd pull it out of this cooler, it would go into the production, it gets fabric, lightly fabricated, the portions come out, and then they go into the finished goods cooler. You know, to make ground beef, you're starting with sometimes a larger chuck roast, right? Something that's gonna be pulled from this inventory cooler, it's gonna come in here, it's gonna get processed, the finished good goes out. So now you have these coolers with finished goods. In this area, you're gonna have a bunch of pickers and packers and stagers. So we'll have individuals from the company, we'll be pulling tickets, think of it like a distribution facility, or a grocery store, they're going to the aisle, they have their grocery list, they're picking the items. In front of these loading docks, you'll have dedicated signs for each route. And you'll be matching the orders that you picked, putting it in a customer's bin to be then loaded onto the truck.
Clarify again, you said about the area that you would not be utilizing between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM?
John, could you go back to the other document? Oh, it's right here, John. And go to the first page, please. Okay. So from the image we were just looking at, right? This is, these are the loading docks. Now, again, this is the master plan for the entire site provided by the landlord. We're just leasing 80,000 square feet. So looking at this, you'll, you'll see that it's, it's not encompassing just, just our space. So there's two entrances and egresses to the building. You can take a right on Comodant, on Beecham, take a right off Beecham Street on the Commandant's Way, and then you can enter here to Justin Drive. The other way of entry is through Beecham Street, taking a left here, coming up, and coming into the building. And what we would like to do is restrict traffic usage of this entrance between the hours of 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM to not be disruptive to the residents.
Thank you, I wasn't sure exactly what you were talking about. Do we have more questions before I open it up? Joan?
Good evening. I was just wondering if you could reiterate a talk about what engineering controls are in place if the ventilation system fails, and how will you contain and treat fumes that protect our workers as well as nearby residents?
So I'm, I'm gonna answer the, the first part of the question first, I just wanna reiterate the question. What controls are in place in the event that there was a systematic failure to the HVAC? So there's gonna be a lot of moving parts in this facility. HVAC is gonna be the, the largest animal that we're gonna be dealing with on a daily basis. You know, I can give you an example of, one of our existing facilities that we have today, our, our meat processing facility, we just had a little bit of a semi-catastrophe where we had a third-party contractor installing some new fire extinguishers, and they must have sent a young associate a few weeks ago, and he didn't use any type of stud finder when he screwed this fire extinguisher in, and his screw must have went, his screw did go directly into some copper piping, which housed the refrigerant for our HVAC, which is very important to our business. All of the rooms in, in this facility have temperature monitoring systems that go to all members of the management, as well as our third-party service provider. So we were immediately alerted to that, and we were able to get someone there after hours to, to eliminate that problem and fix it. The reality is, if there's a degradation of quality in regards to our HVAC systems, it limits our ability to work. And it's a very regulated industry, specifically on the meat, on the meat side. One of the meat processing rooms that you saw, the meat, the poultry, and the pork, we have to build out a dedicated office in each of those rooms for a USDA inspector. Furthermore, we pay for that USDA inspector to be on-site at all times. One of the, one of the deficiency notices you can receive from a USDA inspector is not maintaining proper temperature. So as far as ultimately preventing something from occurring, it's, it's nearly impossible. But there are monitoring systems in place, both internally, that are cloud-based, so any, any member of management and responsible parties and operations can monitor, as well as we will have third-party agencies, HVAC providers, that will be providing 24/7 real-time monitoring. Think of it, you've seen those commercials on TV for ADP monitoring at your, at your home, and you pay a service. There's a similar service that will be monitoring all of our systems around the clock. It's our core competency, is providing a quality product to our customer. It is not HVAC. So we will rely heavily on both well-trained staff, as well as third-party systems and controls.
I'd like to add one thing to that, which is, if, if we have a failure in a HVAC machine, it's usually one. We will have dozens of those, of those cooling systems installed in the plant. That, that will not all go out at the same time, except in the event of a power outage, in which case there is a large generator in the building that we are able to use for backup electricity in the event of a power outage in the community. So we have almost every box checked, and that's one of the reasons this building was attractive to us, is because of, the bread factory had similar systems in place to make sure that their building continued, could continue to operate without electricity from the grid.
Thank you.
It was, did we answer both parts of your question?
Yeah, well, the first part, but if you...
And the second?
Yes, if you wanna speak to the second part, that's fine.
Do you mind repeating the second part of the question, please?
Yeah, so the second part is how will you contain and treat fumes to protect workers and nearby residents, if that was the case?
So as far as overall air quality in the, in the facility, we're, we're not, there's no industrial cooking, cooking happening in the facility. The only cooking that will occur is in that test kitchen. That test kitchen, think of it more like a, a really fancy break room. So there's not going to be fumes or exhaust being manufactured from onsite processing. Any, any odors or, or organic compounds that are in the air are going to be from the products that we're bringing in, and that is going to be mitigated by temperature control, as well as the carbon filtration system. And similar to the HVAC, in regards to refrigeration, the air quality control system will also have a monitoring system in place.
Thank you. And I just had another question, because there's been, you know, concern in terms of chemical use and safety. And just wanted to know, just to get an idea of what type of chemicals would be used in the operation, and also thinking about how they'd be stored, monitored, and safely disposed of.
Yeah. As far as storage goes, part of one of the requirements of SQF, which is an auditing, governing body for best practices for, for companies of our nature, all chemicals that are used in the cleaning process are stored in a dedicated facility.
You mean cleaning of the facility or cleaning of the product?
Oh, the, the product does not get cleaned. Yeah, so I'm speaking, the only cleaning products in the facility are products used to clean the facility. And when I say clean the facility, that's washing down the floors, washing down the equipment, and washing down the trucks. All those products are stored in a separate, if we can, if you wanna go back to the slide, we have a dedicated room for storage of all of the chemicals that are used in cleaning. There is no chemicals used in the production of any of the products that we, we serve. We're, we're serving products that are being consumed by, by everyone here. If you go out to a restaurant, you probably consumed a product that was distributed by one of our operations.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna open it up to the public in a moment. Everybody will have, the process will be, people will have six minutes to speak, and it's gonna be six minutes. At five and a half, I will raise my finger, which means you have 30 seconds, so wrap it up. As you can see, there are a lot of people who, who wanna speak to this, number one. And if at the end of that time, when everybody's had the opportunity to speak, there's something that hasn't been said yet, then you can come and have an additional one minute. So, but we don't, we, and, and again, I'm not, I don't wanna take anybody's options out from saying what they want, I just wanna make sure that we're conscious of everybody's time, that everybody gets the chance to speak. Additionally, before I open it up, one of the things that we always do is we ask the planning department if, what their thoughts and their recommendations. So John, I am going to ask you to do that, so that, that will also give something that the, the audience, before they speak, can respond to.
The zoning board has two votes tonight, both on special permits. One to allow the seafood processing, and the second is to allow that seafood processing use to be extended in the adjacent Naval Hospital Commercial District. There are, the permitting department recommends approval of the, both special permits. There are seven conditions that have to be met of the special permit criteria. They don't all have to be met, they have, and they don't have to all be met to a full extent, but they, the more, the better. The first one is social economic communities which are served by the proposal. The proposed use will address the economic need of providing local jobs for local residents. The petitioner stated that approximately 1/3 of the current employees live in the Chelsea East, Boston Everett area, and the bulk of these local employees are from Chelsea. In addition, the petitioner stated that these residents face lengthy commuting times for the company's South Boston location. A location closer to their residence will allow for shorter and less costly commute times and more time at home with the family. In addition, the petitioner is committed to adding 150 new jobs over the next couple of years with a preference for hiring local residents. Returning long vacant sites to productive use and increasing city revenues. The building has been vacant since Signature Bread moved out many years ago. The lack of a rental income stream limits the owner's ability to maintain and upgrade the facility. This will meet the community need of providing a use for a longtime vacant property and increasing the taxes that the city revenues receives from the property. Spin-off economic development, local businesses usually result in increased local spending by the employees of the business and by the business itself. Employees of the business spend in their resource needs, ordering for purchases from local businesses, for example, suppliers, restaurants, and services. Number two, traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. The proposed use will address traffic flow and safety. The use will generate traffic and parking demand, as did the previous uses, and as will any other potential use of the site, whether allowed by right or by special permit. The petitioner has submitted a traffic analysis, which has been reviewed by the department and the boards. The report indicates that the impact on traffic will be minimal, approximately 30 to 50 vehicles a day. The petitioner has committed to addressing traffic and parking demand concerns. The company will utilize an existing parking area for its employee and visitor-related parking. Access and egress would be via an existing legal curb cut on Commandant's Way. This curb cut has been used for access and egress by the previous users in the building and by the adjacent apartment building at 325 Commandant's Way for decades. The speed of vehicles entering and exiting the curb cut is controlled by a speed bump at the entrance, and the petitioner has agreed to include signage directing all exiting vehicles to come to a complete stop before exiting, and to only take a left so as avoid going through the Admiral's Hill Development. In addition, the petitioner has stated that the company utilizes vans and box trucks for its pickup and deliveries, and deliveries are usually limited to a workday. The planning board has formalized these mitigation arrangements by including them as conditions of major site plan approval. In accordance with the Chelsea zoning ordinance, any condition of the major site plan approval shall be incorporated into the special permit issued by the zoning board of appeals. Three, adequacy of utilities and other public services. Utilities and public services are adequate to meet the expected demand. The city recently reconstructed Beecham and Williams Streets and the Williams-Spreu's Commandant Ways intersection. The street was reconstructed, sidewalks are added, lighting and the signalization was improved, and sewer and drainage was addressed. The Department of Public Works did not express any concern relative to the impact on utilities and public services. Four, neighborhood character and social structures. Use is compatible with the character of the district. The proposal is for an industrial use, fish cutting and repackaging in an industrial zone district. The Beecham-Williams Industrial Corridor houses industrial and warehouse distributions that account for a significant number of local jobs. The building was constructed to house industrial uses and has been used for industrial use for decades. Non-industrial uses are not permitted in an industrial district. The only portion of the use that is in an adjacent Naval Hospital Commercial District are the parking and loading docks, which are accessory to the industrial use. There will be a vegetative buffer between the facility and any residential or institutional use. Five, impacts on natural environment, including drainage. The use covered by the special permit is only approximately 6,800 square feet in size. Only 8.5% of the total space will be occupied by the company. The petitioner has provided evidence that there will be minimal impact on the environment. Their odor expert submitted a report and presented his findings to the board. Site visits to the South Boston facility show that the odor is minimal. In addition, even though the use creates minimal odors, they have committed to storing waste products inside the building and installing a carbon filtration odor control system to minimize odor impacts even more. They have submitted a traffic analysis and a drainage plan, as well as a landscape plan that calls for increasing the number of plantings in the landscape buffer to minimize noise impacts. The petitioner has stated that the company meets all sanitation and health code requirements for the industry. All wastewater will be treated, there will be food-grade drainage system and a water filtration treatment basin. There will be no impact on the adjacent floodplain or the island and river. With waste stored inside the building, there is minimal opportunity for vermin or scavenger species to frequent the site. Six, potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services, tax base, and employment. As stated previously, the proposed use will have positive impacts on the city's tax base and employment. The use will provide for jobs for local residents, not only those currently employed by the firm, but also those hired as the company expands its business. The use will also provide an income stream for the building owner to maintain and improve his facility. The proposed use will also provide for increased property tax returns to the city. The demand for city services, water, and sewer may increase since the building is currently vacant, but this is true for any use seeking to locate in the facility.
Everybody on the board has a copy of what you've read, John?
They do.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna, from a process point of view, if everybody who wants to testify is everybody, I'm gonna open, first of all, I'm opening the public participation portion of the hearing, formally, reopening. Is everybody who plans to testify, have they already signed in? Because if that's the case, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to, I'm going to read, have people come and testify in order of when they signed in. So I think that's the way that's fair. So David, if you could perhaps give me a copy of the sign-in sheet, I would appreciate it, after this young lady signs it? I will, I will. Will, for the, for the record, will you please read the list of the names of the people who have commented?
Yes. These are names of folks who sent in letters of opposition to the zoning board since July 1st, 2025. Please forgive me for any mispronunciations. Kaylee Verrington, Nicholas Gregoretti, Craig Murphy, Yasemin Almarib, Deborah Cuzieri, Dennis Kusmerik, Yisroel Baron, Cynthia Pacioni, S. Michelle Sisselman, Eric Shoemaker, Svetlin Barterov, Marsza Cattoni, Mimi Callum, Patricia Brown, Jose De Almida, Janice DeSantis, Meredith Bernard, Mary Ellen Monahan, Kim Roberts, Yuchen Gao, Patrice O'Connor, Barbara... Barbara Spencer, Mike Pusky, Karen Waldo, Maria Curtin, Thomas Curtin, Pauline Endrosano, Matthew Vincenti, Timothy Sedan, Patricia Sauer, Frank Moran, Cindy Malika, Remo Petracelli, Nina Rosario Villa Fane, Mumen Alshar, Greg Coran, Carol Souza, Tuan Tran, Rhonda Weiner, Rachel Almeida, Faris Sheikh, Nick Lynn, Jean Higgins, George Higgins, Terry Widener, Lester Mack, Michael and Donna Sheena, Kristen LeBlanc, Arrow Farms, Gerald Jennings, Elaine and Leslie Lerman, Anne Marie Griffiths, Esther Berkowitz, and there were seven letters that were just ineligible, I could not read the name. We also received two public letters in support since July 1st, 2025, Fidel Maltese and Eric Schwarzrock, and we also received a position statement from Green Roots.
Thank you. So again, I'm going to call people up by the order in which they've signed up. I will apologize too for a mispronunciation of names. Remember to speak, please speak into the microphone, give us your name and address in six minutes. And I'm going to start this timer as soon as you walk up to the microphone. The first person is, wait a minute, make sure I get properly at six minutes. The first person is Mary Ellen Monahan.
She's not speaking.
No? Okay. Connie Nelson? Carmel Nelson? 68 Captain's Row?
Oh, that's Carol Resnick.
Oh, sorry!
That was fine. All right.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Carol Resnick. I live at 68 Captain's Row Rear in Chelsea, Massachusetts. And jeez, after listening to this, it's like the Disneyland of food processing. Who wouldn't want it in their backyard? I did listen to a podcast by this gentleman, and he specifically called the fish processing business "God-forsaken." So you can hear what he says, but we've dug up stuff and learned otherwise. And even though you don't think that there's a wetland right next to the property, it is a wetland. And you all have reports from the public health at UMass Boston, Mass DEP, and this week I've spoken to the Army Corps of Engineers. It is a wetland. And if you violate, and if you don't file for permits, you can be charged up to $51,000 a day in violation. You can go to jail. The country is very serious about protecting wetlands. And I don't think this permit has been filed, but I'll read it out in case I missed it. It says, "All permit applications are sent to the municipal CONCOM for their review and approval in a public hearing process. For most projects, all butters within 100 feet of the property where work will occur are notified by certified mail." None of us have received that. It hasn't been done. A copy of all WPA permit applications are sent to Mass DEP for an administrative completeness check and technical review, which is published on our data portal. I went to the data portal and there's been no permit filed. The wetland is there. The wetland in Chelsea at that spot is the, globally, the most contaminated wetland globally. And it's just going to get worse. But they're serious. I mean, I can tell you, you have reports. I can tell you it's serious. I can tell you if you don't do what they say, that you will be fined. And, and there are prison sentences for this. And the last thing I want to do is just read what went on here last night, because none of you were here. And last night, and I'm just going to read the amendment to the order. And this took place last night, September 8th, at 7:00 PM. ID number 23Z02, Order Introduced by Counselor Teschi, That the Revised Code of Ordinances of the City of Chelsea, as amended, be further amended by adding the following zoning minimum requirement to Chapter 34, Zoning Article 4, Special Dimensional Regulation, Section 3478, Minimum Requirements. Enclosed seafood processing, seafood packing and packaging, seafood loading, and seafood distribution shall not operate within a 300-foot of residential use located within the City of Chelsea limits. That measure was approved, it's just an order, but it was approved 11 to nothing. And the people who said yes are Taniri Garcia, Counselor Jimenez Rivera, Counselor Recupero, Counselor Taylor, Counselor Teschi, Counselor Kelly Garcia, Counselor Sanagate, Counselor Vega, Counselor Brown, and Counselor DeJesus. It's just, all those people last night said, yes, we need to look at this more. So we're hoping, it's clear, this is like, just not the spot for this place to be. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping. Nobody here has to worry that there's like, you know, I think that some of you might be under the impression that by not allowing Boston provision to move forward at this stage, may open up the City of Chelsea to costly lawsuits. This is just false. It's intimidation. This isn't anything that Cheryl Watson can't take care of. She's got our back. So I would hope that you reconsider what you're thinking about. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bestick. Rhonda Weiner?
Well, I wasn't going to speak tonight because my speech is very short and I'd like to give the time to someone else that I don't do it. But you all didn't hear it, so I'm going to do it. And it's just a true fish story. You've heard of fish stories. I went fishing about 20 years ago with my cousins, and I was in charge of making sure the fish got into the bucket. And apparently, I was not good at that job. And he washed that boat for hours after, but one fish hid, one. And he had to move all the seeds, it was a small boat, move the seeds, he found one fish with maggots all over it. And so I'd like to give somebody else my other time to speak. And I know that's, the other people did so much more research. I didn't do any research, I just had a true story. Okay.
Thank you. Linda King?
By the way, I'm not allowed on fishing boats anymore.
Okay. No? Donna Picorillo? Picorio? No?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Might be easier if you just take off the microphone and hand it to her.
Okay. There you go. I will. That's fine. Give your name and address. Good evening, board members. My name is Donna Picorillo. I'm a resident on Captain's Row, off of Commandant's Way. We're the first building on the left as you're going up Commandant's Way from Justin's, I forget if it's Street, Row, Ave, whatever it is. We're the first ones on the left. And we have an open patio, so we'll get all the stench. He defies and says there will be none. However, I was here when the bread company was here. We got stench. And some people loved the smell of yeast, and other people, it nauseated, to the point where they couldn't eat bread. I was one of the ones that took bread off my menu. I couldn't stand it. It was everywhere, it permeated everywhere. But secondly, and more important to the residents which I represent on Captain's Row, and to the CEO who spoke to me yesterday, he's very concerned about parking. Because his motivation and plan for his facilities is give handicapped people freedom. And you'll see me every nice day outside. Some people tell me I look like, I don't know. I can't even think of the word, but I've got my flag, I've got my helmet from a previous accident, and I was a resident at Captain's Row by a person who wasn't paying attention. But what really bothers me is, I really don't want to impede the freedom of the people who can go down the street in their wheelchairs, walkers, whatever appliance they use. And there are many different varieties, you'll see them. And there's even a blind man who lives on Admiral's Way. I wonder how he does it. I truly do. I've asked him. And he counts, and he's very, you know, myopic about how he travels up and down the street because he walks. He doesn't take the bus unless it's raining or snowing. But he walks every day, and I can count on it because I'm out there every day. Down to Market Basket, he may buy an avocado, but he goes out, gets out, made by a cup of coffee at the little mall, because there's a Starbucks there. Him, I respect the most, because the roads are terrible, the sidewalks are worse. Thankfully, they cleaned up Williams Ave, the four-way cross. So most people observe the law, but you know, there's plenty of people who don't know what "no right on red" means. So I go back to the owner of our facility, Mr. Barry Berman, who owns 11 of these facilities, and it's his desire and wish to make accessibility available to all people. And he's doing a grand job. He really is. But he wants me to plead that you have most of your traffic done on the opposite side where the other entry is. I don't know what the name of that is.
The Justin Drive?
No. The other, the other side.
Beecham and the Justin Drive?
Beecham? That's okay, we understand what you're saying. Beecham. That's what he's pleading for, asking for. He never goes to these types of meetings because he's going to other types of meetings. But he asked me to plead, beg, ask, whatever it took. I don't know, I didn't bring any candy, sorry. But I don't know if you can be bribed or not. I don't do that. I just ask that you consider the needs of people just like me. And there's plenty of them where I live. They come, they go. They go in small groups. 30 seconds. Pardon me? 30 seconds. Oh, dear. So I'll say thank you very much for listening to me. I hope you got the point of the matter, and I hope you'll use Beecham Street instead of Justin Drive. Thank you. That's exactly six minutes. Um, Mimi?
Okay. Thank you.
Svetlana Barterov.
Svetlana Barterov, 325 Commandant's Way, six minutes is a very generous amount of time, and I'm very thankful because yesterday we were forced to talk only for two minutes. Maybe they were afraid what we're going to say, but thank you very much for everything you do for the city. I have so many notes and so many speeches in the past six months, I've been here quite a while. And I sliced this in many different perspectives, in many different angles. Tonight, I was going to take a moment of silence because democracy seems to be dead, but I still have hope that you can make the right decision, whatever that is. I think we're missing somebody tonight. I don't know, you can correct me if I'm wrong. At this meeting, we're missing somebody, and the Board of Health should indeed be involved in decisions about an upcoming fish processing plant. All of this process, I don't know, your zoning board, you know, better, but that seems like an issue that, you know, should be the Board of Health issue, especially considering concerns about the pollution, the noise, the smell, the related nuisance factors. The Health Board is the first line of defense in addressing environmental and public health issues related to industrial activities, including the fish processing plants and any other meat which has known to generate significant odor and waste. These guys are amazing, apparently, but don't wait for the new business to move in. Then the complaints are going to begin, and I'm going to show you why, because mostly I'm concerned about noise. The complaints are going to begin, inspections are going to follow, we're going to detect the sound levels, mitigations of nuisance is behind. Finally, enforcement of compliance and health regulations. Wouldn't it be too late? Are you waiting on court injunctions, lawsuit, seeking the closure of a facility that constitutes persistent nuisance, harming the public health and property values? I mean, they might be great, but this one fourth of the building, the three other fourths might be, I don't want to use bad name, might be anybody. And they might bring more trucks, and they will. So this whole area is going to become very, very industrial, I'm going to talk about this quickly. So let me speed up for a second. Fish processing plants typically require management. The Health Board, therefore, the involvement is critical in permitting and more returning and regulating. Let's not wait for things to happen before we involve them. Chelsea is unique, I really want to underline this. I don't know if you've done the research, we're a very small city, just two square miles, we're the smallest in Massachusetts, and yet we hold the record for the highest percentage of land dedicated to industry in the entire United States. 32% of Chelsea's land is owned for industrial and related uses. This is one-third of our city, and compared to Everett, it's 22%. Revere, 17, Modern is eight, Summer View, seven, Boston is five. Chelsea leads the nation, but just for the wrong reasons. And that 32% is not enough. The city is considering giving industry access to commercial zones. And I keep asking what's next, special permits for industry and residential zones? Like, why do we have zoning if we can move into industry, into commercial zones? And this is not the vision of a city that wants to drive up this unique location and we can just, I hope and beg for you to rezone this. Because let me ask you, back in 2009, when the Axis was approved, who was the chair of the planning board or the zoning board? I'm not sure, but how could it be possible that residential building was approved to be built only 260 feet away from industrial facility? Now we have to like fix things that, a mistake that was made back in time. If that mistake was not made, if Axis didn't exist, probably there would have been no issues with this. But now that a mistake is done, probably we have to fix it. And we keep talking about signature breads. I don't want to say it, but we had world wars. We don't have to go back in time and make things worse again. We haven't had signature bread for five years. Nobody wants to rent the building, the building is like 65 years old, and apparently it's not in a great shape. I'm very happy somebody's willing to come and fix it. I'm just not sure for that purpose is the best. The promises that were made, like in the beginning, there were 50 trucks, then there were 40, there were 37, now there are 20 trucks. I don't know what's going on, but the numbers keep shifting. The shifts were supposed to be from 4 o'clock, now they're at 6 o'clock. We cannot stop any private company to work anytime they want. They can just promise us, we cannot write it in a contract. And now, first, Fidel said there's not going to be traffic on the hill. Now they're going to be using Commandant's Way. Since two weeks ago, they're going to be using Justin Drive. Justin Drive is 12 feet away from our building. 12 feet is from me to you, and all these trucks are going to be, let me tell you why the noise is so important. What about the lives being directly harmed by the decision? The trucks to be used produce between 70 and 85 decibels of noise at 45 feet. You have a sign outside that says no smoking in 50 feet away, and it's just a cigarette. These are trucks at 45 feet, and we cannot have this sign next to our building. So this means that residents will leave about the permitted noise levels every single day. You don't know much about sound, but let me tell you, the other day, there was an 18-wheeler for six hours at the signature bread. I'm not saying that they're going to have this every day. These two buildings are so close to each other, they create standing wave. You need to know what is a standing wave. It hurts your ears. For six hours, the vibration that creates between the two buildings, it makes it unbearable. One truck created this standing wave, they couldn't escape between the buildings. this standing wave, they couldn't escape between the buildings.
Fifteen seconds.
Really, think of children who live in these homes, newborns need 14 hours of sleep, infants 12, toddlers 11, preschoolers 10, school-age kids 9 hours, I need eight, so now I have to tell the kids to go to bed at 10, because, you know, trucks have to be running, the growth is, so let me ask you, what do you wanna leave for the next generation?
That was your six minutes, that was your six minutes, you can, if you, if something doesn't get said, you can talk about it later afterward.
Oh, thank you, one minute later, maybe?
Martin Cody. Mary Clark. Gerald Jennings. Here you go, sir.
My name's Jerry Jennings, I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea, and I've resided there with my wife Marlene for the last 26 years, I've served on many, for many years as a trustee on several of my neighborhood associations. Madam Chairman, and members of the Board, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I'm speaking as a Director of the Admiral's Hill Owners Association, comprised of over 25 residential associations and businesses. I reminded the Zoning Board of Appeals at the July 1st meeting, pardon me, of the formal maintenance agreement between the AHOA and the City of Chelsea. By this agreement, the roadways and sidewalks on Admiral's Hill are private, and are wholly maintained by the AHOA. The AHOA pays for all maintenance, which includes resurfacing and repairs, snow clearing and lighting. This is at a cost of over $500,000 annually, which would otherwise be the responsibility of the city. 96% of this cost is funded entirely by the residents who, in addition, pay regular city taxes. Boston Provisions intends to use Commandant's Way, an AHOA roadway to access 100 Justin Drive. This roadway is clearly marked private on page 14 of their application for special permit. Commandant's Way is a residential road, and is not designed for sustained trucking use. Moreover, trucking is prohibited, and a "no truck" sign is posted at the intersection of Commandant's Way and William Street. Boston Provisions plans on 40-plus trucks to exit and enter multiple times daily from Commandant's Way. In the future, there could be over 150 trucks, based on BP's projected growth and the addition of other fish processing tenants occupying the remaining 75% of 100 Justin Drive. Westbrook Partners, the owner of 100 Justin Drive, has never once contacted the AHOA to request permission to use, for the use of the private Commandant's Way by its potential tenants. Discussions would include, at a minimum, compensation for the excessive and extreme wear, tear and damage to the AHOA roadways. This absence of Westbrook Communication was stated to the Planning Board at both the July 15th and August 26th meetings, with no response from the Board either during the meetings or subsequent to them. It is unacceptable that the owners of 100 Justin Drive presume the right to use the private Commandant's Way, and use it without taking any responsibility for the maintenance and damage caused by their tenants. Therefore, the AHOA strongly and emphatically urges the Zoning Board of Appeals to deny this special permit.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say that the studies, the traffic studies that were submitted were only for William Street and Beecham Street, and did not include Commandant's Way. I'd also like to point out that when Signature Bread's used the facility, they only used the bottom level, and all of their trucking was from the bottom level, Justin Drive to Beecham Street, they did not use Commandant's Way. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna DiCrescente?
I'm not a diCrescente.
Okay. Need us, Nicholas Gregoretti?
Nicholas Gregoretti, 65, Breakwater Drive, for preservation of the record, I will be reading the following remarks verbatim. My efforts tonight are in good faith for the community, for community advocacy, this is all with malice towards none, it is based solely on my review of public records, along with my own thoughts and opinions formed from that review, I am not an attorney, and nothing I say should be taken as legal advice, any references to statutes or potential ramifications is provided only for context. Everything I am describing comes directly from documents obtained via public records requests covering January 1st, 2024 through July 22nd, 2025. The city solicitor marked these as complete record requests in the system, that PRR, among other things, produced 37 unique abutter lists. Every file we create digitally carries metadata, a digital timestamp and fingerprint showing when it was created, by whom, and with what software, it cannot be changed by accident. The city's metadata shows that all seven abutter lists tied to cases 2025-06 through 2025-12 were created on July 31st, 2025, by the same user, recorded as De Priest John, using Microsoft Print-to-PDF within just 26 minutes. This is two weeks after residents initially criticized the city for failure to notify abutters. Seven different lists, supposedly tied to different cases, all created in less than a half an hour, that is not assessor certification, that is batch fabrication, and for at least one case, 2025-07 Boston Provisions, the timing is clear, its abutter list was generated 77 days after the statute required, that was not timely certification, that was a false entry into the record created only for the public, had, created only after the public had already criticized the city for failing to notify abutters. Unfortunately, that is far from the only issue, the lists were riddled with errors, simple errors in the address, wrong zip codes, invalid state abbreviation, duplicates or mismatches between city and zip, for example, one list shows the City of Revere Planning Board as being located in Chelsea, another contains a malformed zip code recorded as 022-1. Across all 37 lists, the total error rate was about 1.6%, already fatal against the state mandate of 0%. But in the July 31 batch, the error rate jumps to 5%, nearly three times higher, that spike is not random, it is proof that these lists were reconstructed, not assessor certified, and here is why that matters even more tonight, five of those cases on your docket tonight, this evening, are built on those very July 31 lists. And beyond the errors, none of those abutter lists produced carried the basic elements required of a certified assessor list, not one came with an assessor letterhead, not one was stamped or signed, not one was dated, not one included a parcel ID and address block. Massachusetts law is clear, under Chapter 266, Section 67, knowingly making a false entry into a public record or presenting such a record as true when it is false is punishable by up to five years in state prison. If this Board votes yes tonight, knowing these defects, you are not just voting on a project, you are voting on a record that is already compromised, that means appeals will overturn it, oversight agencies will take notice, and ethic inquiries are a very real possibility. A yes vote is, will be taken without jurisdiction, without legal authority to act, and tremendous personal risk to yourselves, topped off by the conflicts of interest I outlined in my public complaints. This is not a clerical problem, the fabricated abutter lists, the inflated error rates, the missing minutes, the expired residency waiver, and the incomplete certification all point to a systemic pattern of obstruction, a record that changes only after the public calls it out, combined with Boston Provisions' very generous sponsorships of nonprofits and city events, this does not look good. Which brings me to you, you are all caught up in something much bigger than this one decision tonight. Please understand, the formal complaints I filed against you were not meant as personal attacks, they were filed to prevent this exact situation, to protect you from being placed in a position where I would have to stand here and say these things on the record, so that you might have had a chance to plead ignorance, but I cannot let you make a decision knowing, without knowing exactly what you were deciding on, I may be right, I may be wrong, but the evidence I've shared with the proper oversight agencies is staggering. The defective abutter lists are only one part, consider the city's contract with the Chamber of Commerce for the 2025 gala that Boston Provisions sponsored, three of the things, the many things that are wrong with that contract, it shows evidence of backdating, it was structured under false pretenses as if it were, as if a grant or a contract, and it tied city funds directly into an event sponsored by the very applicant before you, you have a complete copy of this on your desk. The contract was signed by City Manager Fidel Maltese, City Solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher, Chief Procurement Officer Dragka Ivanis, and Chamber Executive Director Jennifer Hassel. This vote is not just about one project, it is about your futures, and the future of Chelsea. To advocate for our own health, safety, and general welfare is not to be a privileged few, it is to be human.
Dante. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Marlene Jennings.
Admiral's Way.
Okay. William Davy, I'm sorry, Downey, 24 Admiral's Way? No? Okay. Suzanne Perry? Okay, put that down there.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, can everyone hear me in the back? Okay, great, thank you. I'd like to begin this evening...
Name and address, please.
Excuse me, oh, sorry, Suzanne Perry, 160 Commandant's Way in Chelsea. I'd like to begin this evening by talking about jobs, since when we first heard about Boston Provisions from Fidel, it was all about jobs. That is the one constant I have heard in bringing Boston Provisions to 100 Justin Drive. Of the jobs that will transfer here, only 36 of them are, or approximately 36 of them, are held by Chelsea residents. It is wonderful that those 36 people will be closer to work, but is not a reason to rezone the land. Should Boston Provisions move to 100 Justin Drive, and after the construction, which will last approximately 18 months, a year, 18 months, Boston Provisions has promised 150 additional jobs over three years, 50 of which, 50% of which are promised to Chelsea residents, that's 25 jobs a year for three years. And let's talk about these jobs, Boston Provisions is a great company, I don't think anybody's disputing that, that's not the point. Is this the kind of work you want your children to do? Is this the type of industry that will make Chelsea prosper? While a few may benefit, this business is not anyone's big hope for the future of Chelsea or for our children, which is how it's been framed to us. Look at what's happening in Everett, the development is hand over fist, look at our own past, the building of medical centers in Chelsea, which bring a lot of jobs and a lot of traffic to Chelsea, the hope that we will be, one day, be able to see the reimagining of Broadway, I don't know, someday, and, most importantly, I think, and in support of, what is about to happen, which is a presentation by La Collaborativa, the chance for Chelsea young adults to aspire to great things, that's what's going to make Chelsea great, and that's what's going to ensure the future of Chelsea, not rezoning what has been attached to a residential area to make it into a fish plant, and a meat plant. Chelsea can do better, and Chelsea needs to do better. Much evidence has been presented by our neighbors at Access Apartments about how this fish meat industry with its dozens of trucks, 24/7 operation, in close proximity to 150 housing units, will in fact be a huge detriment to the lives of ordinary families, they rented their living spaces with no idea that this kind of change could take place. I don't know about you, I worked for many years, I'm now retired, but there are often days when I didn't have to get, even when I was working, that I didn't have to get up at 6 o'clock in the morning, but if there are trucks moving under my window at 6 o'clock in the morning, you better bet I'm gonna be up, whether it's a good day, or a bad day, or an in-between day, or a weekend, because they work 24/7. In addition, neither did the many men and women who traverse Commandant's Way by wheelchair, and tonight, we heard from Barry Berman, and I hope you know how significant that is, Barry is a leading citizen of this city, and he cares deeply about the people who live at Florence, London Florence Center for Living, that is a fabulous, fabulous place, I've heard about it all my life. These people will be dodging trucks on the street where regular trucking has never been allowed, never. Interestingly enough, last night, and perhaps you saw this, one city councillor who spoke was very upset with us, people in my neighborhood, for wanting this business, for not wanting this business at our doorstep, he told us that while he voted for it, he did not want it in his district either, even though his district is zoned for it. I thought that was very telling, he doesn't want it in his district, but he voted for it, because it's not gonna be in his district, it's gonna be in ours. We also have ample evidence that Massachusetts procedure governing zoning change was not followed by the city before the vote by the city council, and I think that Nick has gone into that in quite a lot of detail, so we don't need to go over it, but we know that Boston Provisions somehow assured of a positive outcome, even without the vote, has been sponsoring activities all over Chelsea, it's not a good look. Now, many members of the city council have come to us, knowing that they did not have all the information they needed before they took that vote early on, but they have been told it is too late to do anything about the vote that they took. So the answer lies with you, the Zoning Board, every idea that comes out of City Hall is not the best idea. Think about the great idea someone at City Hall had many years ago about building a coal plant in Chelsea near the water, remember that? A lot of people who lived here do. The neighborhood objected strenuously, and the neighborhood prevailed. Without neighborhoods, there would be no Chelsea. I urge you to vote with the people of Chelsea, and not with one business that does not represent Chelsea's future, and will be a hardship for neighbors in the present, deny this special permit, or put it on hold until something can be done to look further into all these issues. Thank you.
I'm from the city.
Okay. Cynthia Paciori?
Good evening, members of the Zoning Board, my name is Cynthia Pacioni, and I've lived at 50 Boatswain's Way for 30 years, and worked in the food distribution industry in the New England Produce Center for 30 years. When considering the criteria for granting a special permit, several factors are considered, I'd like to speak to a couple of these, the first is traffic flow and safety, most deliveries do come in on tractor trailers, Mr. Moniz said he will use the Marina Side, which is Justin Drive Beecham Street entrance, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, well, these are off-peak hours in the food distribution industry, so it really doesn't matter, furthermore, this directs traffic directly under the windows of the Access residents. I've heard several references to the former tenant, Signature Bread's, what are you worried about, it's the same thing as Signature Bread's? Well, I got in touch with the former, as you were talking about, president of Signature Bread's, it's important to note that Signature Bread was a different operation, they did not need a zoning change or special permit, they did not process seafood, meat or poultry, they baked bread, but, they were not distributors, meaning, they did not have a fleet of trucks or vans to deliver to individual restaurants. or vans to deliver to individual restaurants. They relied on master distributors such as U.S. Food Service to do this. This cuts down drastically on traffic flowing in and out of the facility. In addition, Signature Bread used six loading docks. I counted twenty-one proposed loading docks on the plans for Boston Provision. I direct your attention to the picture, where is my picture? Oh. This picture of traffic exiting on Commandant's Way at 7:30 a.m., which is peak time for a distribution business, that's when all the trucks go out. The cars are lined up from the traffic light, if you can see it down here, all the way up to the entrance to Admiral's Way, which is just beyond the fire hydrant. Directly across from this line of cars is the entrance to Justin Drive. Now, can you imagine forty to fifty vans, a few box trucks, or even one or two trailers trying to enter or exit at the same time? Not to mention the major safety hazard to pedestrians, schoolchildren on foot, and residents of the Lennard Florence Center for Living using motorized wheelchairs. The last point to consider is the impact on the neighborhood character. Article ninety-seven of the Massachusetts Constitution states, "The people shall have the right to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise, and the natural scenic, historic, and aesthetic qualities of their environment." Each and every resident in Chelsea is entitled to these rights. The inherent characteristics and the operational requirements of Wolf Seafood puts these basic rights in jeopardy. In consideration of all our concerns, we call upon you to pump the brakes on this project and deny the special permit. Thank you.
Roya Viganeda, 325 Commandant's Way. I have a lot to say, and I'll try to say it as quickly as possible. The presentation sounds wonderful. It really does. It sounds great. Mike Tyson once said, "Everybody has a plan until you get punched in the face." Knowing what I know from food industry, there's always emergencies, there's always seasonal impacts, there's weather, there's going to be late deliveries, there's going to be peak time, et cetera, et cetera. Even CAM is built out an expansion. That plan could be today, thirty days, sixty days, a year from now, it could be much different. And there's nothing, none of you can do, to say that a certain percentage of a building is going to be X and is going to stay X. You can't guarantee me that. There's going to be a conflict. Who are we going to call when they're operating the hours that shouldn't be calling, that should be running? Who are we going to call? The fish police? I've worked on the council, I've dealt with these sort of calls, and the worst thing we can do, I have to say, is there's nothing we can do. They're there. Or if you do call them, it's going to be too late. You're going to call the police because their truck's running long? You're going to call the city manager, he's going to say, "I'm sorry," some future city manager is going to say, "Sorry, there's nothing I can do." You're going to call whoever the ISD director is? There's going to be a conflict, guaranteed. History has shown us that. We've had too many issues in this city with similar uses. I'm just saying, look, this isn't the right spot for it. Further down into the industrial zone, and I'm not saying the 300 buffer zone is perfect, it can be anywhere in the triangle area of Eastern Ave, it can be anywhere further down the Produce Center, we don't have to worry about the sound of trucks at 4:00 a.m. or any of the smells that will happen. It's going to happen. And there will be, and the worst thing that we can all say tonight is, "I told you so." There's no satisfaction in that. It's going to happen. Why put us in that place? Just find a better location. You know, they said tonight, "Oh, it checked all the boxes for the location, the building, et cetera, et cetera." The one, the most important box this does not check is that, "Are you welcomed by your neighbors?" That box is not checked off. We shouldn't have to compromise anything. And by the way, your criteria is, is it for the economic benefit of this community? This building has been an economic drain for the last twenty years. They shut down, they were ready to shut down the bread plant. J.Ash needed to get a pass, a tax break from the city council in order to keep them open. We all subsidized that use. They weren't contributing to the economy of this, of us, if we're paying for it. No one told Tito and Isabel, "Hey, when you got that tax bill, and you got to pay more." No one cared about my parents having to spend more time, like these thirty employees will spend more time with their family. They didn't say to Tito, "Hey, your bill went up higher during Signature Bread, you get to spend less time." They couldn't hire somebody. No one cared. And now we're supposed to say, "Let's keep on going with this?" We could have had Amazon. Tom Ebrizino said, "No." I had the conversation with him. Could have had Amazon there. He didn't like Amazon. One guy decided not, that Amazon couldn't come to the city. We could have had Amazon there. They tore down the Produce Center, a section of Produce Center, and built it over there in Everett. Could have been here, but now we're paying the price for it. And I'm telling you, the price that they paid for this building is never going to reach that assessed value. It hasn't, and it won't. So that means we're going to be subsidizing this. Add insult to injury. Add insult to having to deal with this, to economic injury to the rest of us who are going to be subsidizing this. Why? It's not fair. Just find a better place. That's all we're saying. There's a conflict. It's going to happen. Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. Can everyone hear me okay? I'm going to hold it instead. Alrighty. Kelly Garcia, 135 Washington Ave, and here Chelsea City Councillor-at-Large. Chelsea, as you know, has carried more than its fair share of burdens, from Boston hides in furs, to the massive eastern salt pile, to Lower Broadway's full fuel storage. Those scars remain. While the council did in fact approve this zoning change originally, some of us stand here tonight to say, "We regret that decision." And we are here in the attempts of fixing this error. The proposed seafood processing plant sits directly beside senior housing, assisted living, schools, and family homes. Without that protection, residents would be forced to live with truck traffic odors and waste just steps from their front doors. Team, this is not progress, this is a step backwards. We must ask, what future are we shutting out? This property could bring higher-paying jobs, stronger tax value, and neighbors that build community. Instead, we are being asked to accept more trucks, more odor, and more pollution on our waterfront. Chelsea deserves better. Tonight, the harms are undeniable and the benefits are speculative. For those reasons, and in solidarity with hundreds of residents here present and at home watching, I urge the ZBA to vote no on this permit. Chelsea's people, our health, and our future must always come first. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Tanari Garcia, 135 Washington Ave, I'm also a city councillor, District Four. As a city councillor, but more importantly, as a resident and a mother, I cannot stay silent about Boston Provision. I regret deeply that I was not present January sixth, Free King's Day, a day that is sacred to me and my children. But what troubles me even more is how these orders were pushed through, every single one passed either before or right after break. That timing is questionable, and it makes our community lose trust in the process. And as a councillor, I am embarrassed for not catching this sooner. And let's be clear, this project jeopardizes the very lungs of Chelsea. Our children, our families, and our elders are already struggling under the weight of pollution, truck traffic, and high asthma rates. Bringing this company here only makes it worse. Why should Chelsea carry the burden while other cities around us thrive? Our people deserve better. We deserve clean air, safe streets, and real opportunities, not more warehouses that steal our breath and poison our community. On top of that, proactive engagement from Boston Provision is and has been a little fishy. If they truly valued our city, I think they would have done a better job at speaking to our residents and business owners and showing a real commitment to being a good neighbor. Instead, we are left with many contradictions and already broken promises. I will read a letter from a business owner at the Produce Center. Sorry. "As a business operating in the Chelsea Everett industrial area, we have significant concerns regarding the proposed special permit for seafood operations in the area. We believe this will negatively impact both our business and businesses in the surrounding community. Below are the five main points we would like to raise. Boston Provision's estimates appear to be present values without considering future growth. Foul orders will interfere with our business reputation. Regulated activities will increase the regulatory burden by association on the entire, entire local business community. Traffic will increase and choke an already overburdened street. We have sympathy for the residents of Admiral's Hill, who truly need to live with the issues that they, that they are concerned about. And at risk of speaking against our own business interests, shouldn't that be zoned for high-density development? Boston Provision's assumptions. I would like to address the narrative portrayed by Boston Provision posture, because they make some certain business claims that are focused on current operations. However, it is possibly best to look at future operations that residents and businesses would have to live with after permits are issued. Business expands and attention is elsewhere. First, I need to disclaim that this is only from what is publicly accessible from our research. Only Boston Provision's can guarantee accuracy. If there are inaccuracies, I would encourage more transparency from Boston Provision's." I can share that letter with you guys later. "Tonight, I ask the CBA to consider, please take a plea of our residents, not as another complaint, but as a cry for help. Our community is telling you loudly and clearly, we do not want this, we cannot carry this, and we deserve better. I may have made a mistake by missing that first vote, but I will not make the mistake of staying quiet now. I stand with the residents, I stand with our children, and Boston Provision's should not be in our backyard." Thank you.
Good afternoon to the public as well. You know, one of the things I have to say that as my job...
Your name and address, please.
Yes, my bad. My name is Manuel Tassia, I'm the city councillor for District Seven, I live at 188 Broadway. And I actually had a meeting in November 22nd, 2024, with Marty McGinnis from Westbrook Partners and Fidel, Chelsea City Manager. And one of the very first things I asked Fidel, and I have this on email too, I said, "Please find out who are going to be the people impacted. Tell me how they're going to be impacted. Tell me if they're okay with it. And tell me how this is going to be good for the city." Right? When we had the meeting, I think Wolf Fish is a great company, I think they do great work, I like fish, my family likes it, we eat it all the time. You know, this is not to say we don't like this company, we like the company, we want them in Chelsea. The only thing we do not want is for seniors and for anybody else in our community to be impacted negatively by the production of the company. One of the things people know me by is I'm a very calm person, I've rarely been angry. I'm angry today, I'm not angry at you, but I am angry because I feel I've been lied to. And one of the things that I've explained to many residents, it's that when the council took a vote to make the zoning amendment, we took a vote after being told everybody is fine with it. Nobody has complained. Now, that goes to show you, the council made a decision, I don't want to blame anybody specifically, but under a misconception that this was going to be good for the residents of our city. Maybe it's going to be good economically, but honestly, I'll tell you, if it's twenty-five jobs a year we're getting, we already have a free cash fund of twenty million dollars every year that we can decide what to do with it. So financially, City of Chelsea is doing amazing, so I don't want you to worry about development, or new income, or new tax generation. Yes, we'll be working on that in every other single aspect of this city. So today, I want you to consider, first of all, thank you for spending these many hours listening to the residents, and I know that you understand the level of seriousness that your vote has today. These are all the people that are going to be impacted by your decision today, so I want you to know again that the council yesterday unanimously passed a recommendation to the planning board to make a 300-feet buffer zone that would prevent this exact development at this exact location. Because again, the city council made a mistake, I would plead you to not let this mistake be permanent. Allow us to bring it back to the table and discuss better steps to continue further. The city has already expressed huge support for this, the city manager has wrote, has written a dozen letters in support of the company. I've met with the company, again, they are good, they're just not good for this location specifically, not for them themselves, but rather for residents. So again, consider this, yesterday, unanimous vote by the council to prevent this from happening again, and to close the doors on any incoming permits after this one. So respectfully, I ask all the members to vote no and do not grant this special permit. Thank you.
Yesenia Alfara, 12 High Street in the City of Chelsea. Currently, I also sit and represent the school committee for the past ten years, and I'm also running for City Councillor-at-Large. I can tell you, I'm a neighbor, I am a resident of that neighborhood that they are discussing right now. I'm appalled that I did not learn through my city, as usually, they will send us a letter, they will say, "This is going to impact your neighborhood. Come, we're going to have a hearing." I didn't, I didn't know anything about it until I received a letter from the neighborhood. And when I'm knocking on doors, they're telling me, "Do you hear about this? This is going to impact us." This is really huge. Chelsea is the backyard of pollution. How many of you, many of you have lived here, and you know how many times we fought for things that I wanted to be brought here, like the power plant? You remember the power plant? Some of you will. We fought also with the mitigation of the pollution and the noises of the airplane. I was one of the plaintiffs. You remember that, Roy? So when I refer Chelsea being the background of pollution, we have it here, why do they look for Chelsea? Chelsea is only 1.8 square miles surrounded by three-thirds of water. We have fought with La Colaborativa for so many years, and Chelsea residents against pollution, the studies that have come from the Boston University and other places about the asthma and bringing the smell of the fish. I can tell you, I grew up in Eastie, you know, the channel fish? Couldn't open the windows, I couldn't enjoy... I couldn't enjoy the smell because you will open the window, the whole house will smell like fish. Now, I cannot enjoy my backyard. I live right in front of my backyard is the Tobin Bridge, that is currently under construction, removed, and by the way, the hazard of lead paint that was found after we collected a little chip of the paint that was sent to a study and it was found with lead paint. My kids grew up there, exposed to that without me knowing. So this is what's going to happen to the residents around that city, around our city, that they're going to grow up around this pollution of the trucks that are going to be coming. We already have in the past also fought for trucks to have the filters that will not contaminate the atmosphere. So I am here to please ask you, think, take this back and do studies. See how this is impacting our city. And I don't know why we have to think more. You see here, all the residents, we are all opposed. There is many that couldn't come tonight, but I bet you, you might be receiving emails and tons of letters, the people that are against. Thank you.
Nancy Burke? Okay. And I'm sorry about this one. Azublo Matos? No? Third, 375 Commandant's? No? Okay. Amanda Meyer? No? Naomi Lopez? Eddie Gaffney?
Hello? Hello? Okay. My name is Eddie Gaffney. I live at 100 Commandant's Way. Thank you for the time to speak tonight. As many of you know, last night, we had a unanimous vote of eleven to zero for an amendment to the seafood and meat processing zoning change that would require a three-hundred-foot buffer to any residential district in Chelsea. I would like to personally thank all the counselors who voiced their opinion last night and are here tonight to support us. Thank you tremendously. We wouldn't be able to do this without you guys. We all soon be getting the same level of help and community involvement that we've been numerous other projects around the city, such as the old Polio Comparo Restaurant on Pearl Street. Unfortunately, we had zero help and our voices were even silenced. But as you can see here tonight, you made our voices louder and our mission stronger. Because with this new amendment, we not only are protecting Admiral's Hill and Mary O'Malley's Park, we are protecting all Chelsea residents in all districts. I would like to go over some other facts about this project and highlight some of the misuse of the Chelsea zoning ordinance and their special permit regulations and why this should never be allowed at this site. Fact, the historic thirty-year-old zoning change to the industrials district happened seven days before Christmas last year and was specifically done for this site, for this company. Look in the meeting minutes. Fact, this fifty-eight-year-old building is on a divided lot and must comply with both zoning districts. Fact, seafood and meat processing is not allowed in the Naval Hospital Commercial District, even with the special permit. To me, this is a nonstarter, but here we are trying to fit a square peg in a round hole. Fact, written on the special permit in all caps in the first rule, it states, "No special permit may authorize a use or activity otherwise permitted in the district in which the land," I repeat, "the land or structure is located." Fact, April first, 2025, Chelsea Building Department agrees with us and deny the application stating, "Your proposed use may not be lawfully established due to being a divided lot." The addition to eleven now, but originally it was twenty-one, new loading docks are on the second floor and two-hundred-seventy feet away from Axis. This truck noise will be amplified and projected towards Axis and towards the assisted living buildings and the rest of Mary O'Malley Park. When BP increases to twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with four shifts, and roughly their truck numbers changed, but from their presentation originally, I got two-hundred-and-sixteen daily truck trips, which equals exactly one every nine minutes. Justin Drive is actually utility and easement, not really a road. Therefore, all traffic will be going, entering Commandant's Way, and truck traffic is not allowed on this road. Fact, trucks entering, turning right into Justin Drive, that sidewalk is their blind spot when they're turning right. They will not be able to see anybody in wheelchairs or kids on the sidewalk. Someone's going to get hit. Fact, this project does not, and I quote, "encourage the most appropriate use of land throughout the city," end quote. Chapter thirty-four, Chelsea Zoning Ordinance. Fact, there are brand-new warehouses in one empty lot that is already zoned for seafood and meat processing. Logistically, better location down the street for this industry. Heck, you can move the whole Boston Fish Pier there now. How's that for economic development? Why wait eighteen to twenty-four months to build out this facility? Only the second floor, only half, only fifty percent of the second floor is getting used. Why do that for two years? Fact, BP's fifty-million improvements would equal roughly seven years of rent at those other places. Fact, Westbrook Partners purchased the site in 2020 and have not tried to do anything since then. So the best tenants they can find require a change to a thirty-plus-year-old zoning law to only get fifty percent of the second floor used that is not even allowed in the Naval Hospital Commercial District. Seems fishy. Fact, there are properly-zoned buildings and land ready now for this industry. Why should those landowners who invested in those buildings not be helped fill them? Fact, this is clearly not allowed for the site, and it's not just our fight. We are fighting for a better Chelsea for all districts. In conclusion, I ask that you deny this application tonight. Then we could work together to help Westbrook Partners and the city develop the site using proper zoning ordinances that are beneficial to Chelsea's bright future and the landowner. Thank you.
Rochelle Cromwell? No? Margera? I'm not sure. 325 Commandant's?
Good evening. Zoning Board members, neighbors, friends. My name is Marchesa and I live at 325 Commandant's Way.
Could you spell your last name for me, please? I'm sorry.
It's K-O-T-O-N-I.
Thank you.
Tonight is not just any meeting. Tonight is a decisive moment for our homes, for our streets, for our lives. This is a line in the sand. I live forty-six feet from that site. That's not a number. It's where home is. It's where family is. It's where everyone in this room is. We deserve respect. We want space. We need clean air. We demand safety. Our streets are already drowning in traffic, choked with trucks, noise, pollution. You want to add more? That's not progress. That's a death sentence for our community. We will not stand for it. And by the way, Taste of Chelsea is coming up. A celebration for our people, our food, our pride. BP is listed as a local restaurant there. That's a lie. They're not part of Chelsea yet, not even close. And yet they want to invade our neighborhood, our city, and their shadow is creeping over everything we hold dear. This isn't about jobs. BP has one-hundred-and-twenty-five jobs now. They want to move all of those jobs here. They're relocating. No new jobs, no growth, just dumping. Dumping their burden on us while pretending it's a gift. Tonight, you have the power. Protect our streets. Protect our homes. Protect our future. Or turn your backs on the people who trust you, who are here tonight fighting for their lives. Don't turn your back to the faces that are looking at you right now. I'm asking you to do what's right, not what's easy, not what's convenient, what's right. Let tonight be remembered, a night when a community stood up and this board stood with them. Thank you.
Counselor, David? David, are there more? Are there more names? Thank you. Roberto Contreras? No? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you. You were hiding over there. Okay.
Hello, my name is Roberto Contreras. Roberto Contreras, and I'm living at 74 Addison Street in Chelsea. I'm here today to talk about the building for La Correativa at 50 Hertz Street.
No, this is the wrong case, Sonny.
Okay.
So that's, I'm sorry. No, that's okay. I appreciate that. Next time. I appreciate that, though. You'll have a chance after this. And it was here, so there's no definition of who they're going to be testifying for. So that's my bad. Marios Arrazo? Nope. Yamil Nieves? Okay. Amy and Louise Gomez?
My mind is very simple.
Talk into the microphone, please?
So hi, my name is Amy. I live at 120 Commandant's Way in Chelsea. And I've also been here, I was here speaking a few times. And I was part of the Boston Hides and Furs and also the windmill that we fought up against, and we did win on that. And Chelsea already has a lot of industrial issues. We fought against that. We got them out, they left. And then to bring in this fish company, I'm just wondering, I know I asked you once before that I don't think you, if you have children or if you have, you know, loved ones, I don't think you'd want your children to live in an environment like that. Would you want your family to live in an environment like that, to walk outside?
Let's address your remarks to me, not to-
Okay. I don't think as a owner in a type of an environment like that, you come to this area to put a business. I don't think as a person would want to live in an environment like that. And we're not saying that your company is bad. We admire you for, you know, having this type of business, but to come into Chelsea into a condensed area, it's not healthy. We have the park, the children play in there. We have the elderly community, we have the school down the block. We have the entranceway to the trucks. It's not a healthy environment, like we said. There's other areas down on Western Ave or Marginal that has those type of areas that's more suitable for this type of business. This is too congested. And I hope, and I thank you so much for coming to listen. I can't, I'm so nervous, I'm sorry, I can't speak. I thank you for listening, and I please hope that you guys can reconsider with all the information that we gave to you tonight and throughout these past few months. Thank you.
Emmanuel Ariz-Arizzo? Nope? Jane Emerson?
Once again, I have to say, Jane Emerson, 50 Boats Swains Way. I'm a resident for thirty-two years, half my life, and I'm also a senior. So let's just put that right down there. I am here, just, I want to clarify a few points that I don't think have been said. Right now, we have, we've had over seventeen hundred people join us between a petition and the meetings that are here. Now, Chelsea, Admiral's Hill has three thousand people on it, that's estimated, and that's conservatively. Chelsea's total population is like forty thousand two hundred. Admiral's Hill represents 7.5% of Chelsea's population. And as you can see, we're on a very tight geographical landscape perimeter as to where we live. Now, everyone has been talking about Axie's Apartments, so keep in mind, it's 7.5, a very small imprint on land. So it's not just Axie's Apartment. When you look at it, Axie's is two-hundred-and-sixty feet away from the entrance to where Wolf's Fish is going. Then you have the Jewish Life Care Center, which was founded in 1919, by the way, on Admiral's Hill. And then you had, so the Coen Levin Estates is a hundred-and-ten long-term patients. The Florence Center has a hundred ALS and MS patients. And those are the people that were here earlier tonight talking about how their primary transportation is by wheelchair, which I see them every day. Also, the ALS Center is the largest center in the world treating ALS patients. It's world-renowned. There was an annual ALS fundraising walk. It's a two-mile walk, it's on October 5th of this year. It starts at 160 Commandant's Way, which is about five-hundred feet away from where Wolf's Fish will be. They walked two miles. Seven hundred people participated last year. We have the July 4th celebrations. We have the January 1st celebrations. We have the four-hundredth Chelsea Anniversary Parade down in O'Malley's Park. So it's so much more than just Axie's, so much more than just, it's 7.5%. Now, in terms of Wolf's Fish, I came across this article. This is a Chelsea record on July 24th, and I have to say, I was disappointed with this. Michael Garrity, one of the founders of Boston Provisions, the parent company of Wolf's Fish Processing and Souvenir's Butchery, had to say, "The voices of a few dissenters do not represent the few of forty thousand of the city's residents. That said, if we're even a single voice, we would value every comment and work diligently to incorporate the community feedback into our community plan. We believe that respectful dialogue is the foundation of a strong community, and we remain committed to all residents." And then he went on to ask if locally-rooted Provision could not find a home, here, this is the other part of it. If Boston Provisions could not find a home in a district that is already zoned industrial, it could be the location for a by-right industrial tenant takeover, not subject to any public review. So once again, to say that if I heard from only one voice, now, he's been present at all the meetings. We have seventeen hundred voices right now. Now, put that and compare it to what Fidel is doing with the Chelsea Ford activity right now, where you have twelve hundred residents that have signed surveys, and that's all of Chelsea. That's forty thousand people, and you have twelve hundred people that have signed the petition and the surveys. We are a community of three thousand, and we have seventeen hundred people right now. And it's, and once again, very small community. The other thing too, is I talked earlier tonight about how they don't want to, the warehouses don't work for them because the ceilings are too high. Now, when you buy a condo, you're not buying how high the ceiling is. You're buying for the footprint of where you walk around on. All right? So that doesn't even apply here. It's not going to increase the rents, it's not going to do anything like that. It's also something where they could bring down, drop down ceilings to take care of that issue. Oh, just one more thing. So Chelsea has had a hard row in terms of, you know, the salt piles, the Tobin Bridge, Logan Airport. But I reflected on this the other day. When they built the Tobin Bridge, the one exit that they didn't include on the final because they ran out of money was an exit that would take Chelsea up onto Route Three and down the Southeast Expressway. Now you have to get on or off at Sullivan Square to get up here. So just once again, when Chelsea was overlooked. So you've got Fidel working on the fifty-year plan. So now you folks are working on a master plan, which I think is wonderful. Every city should have a master plan. This is the first master plan that has even begun in the past fifty years since before the 1973 Chelsea Fire. So to come in and put a fish factory in a prime location in Chelsea when you have all this wonderful stuff going on down there with tall residences, the stadium, lots of businesses, the FBI came in, and to put in a fish factory that's going to be there for the next decades, if you think about it, Wolf's has been down on the seaport for a hundred years. And Wolf's is now talking about they're going to come here and they're going to grow a hundred percent in two years. So they're going to come over and they're going to bring us in a hundred-and-twenty-five jobs, thirty-eight of whom are Chelsea residents. They're going to grow that over the next two, next three years by fifty percent, no, by a hundred-and-twenty-five, fifty percent of which will be Chelsea residents. So we're really talking about twenty-one jobs per year over three years for a total of like sixty-some-odd jobs for Chelsea residents. And you are going to disrupt the quality of life of three thousand residents embedded on the hill. Once again, I've been there for thirty-two years. Now, to put some distance back in with that, Captain's Row-
You've got seven seconds, wrap it up.
Uh-oh, uh-oh. All right, Captain's Row is five hundred feet away. Oh, you've got a hundred-and-sixty boat rear in there. I suggest everybody go down and walk around and see how close everything is. All right? It's all within a thousand feet. Thank you.
Gladys, I assume you're not here to talk about this one?
Of course.
You are, then come on.
Hi, good evening. Esto está muy- I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you so much. I am here basically to let you know that we care, La Colaborativa, and me as a resident of Chelsea- of Chelsea, 116 Clark Avenue, I have cared deeply about good-paying jobs in our city. We have always, we are basically tired of being that poor community of people that are constantly sort of like looking for a better quality of life. I go to the Proto Center all the time, because I'm always seeking opportunities for the programs that we run at La Correativa. Or I'm always looking for donations for our food pantry from the Proto Center. But I tell you that this type of company shouldn't be at the expense of the residents that have so deeply fought for environmental injustice. For 23 years, La Correativa dedicated 23 years of my life protesting asphalt power plants, you name it, eastern minerals, we have done this. I think it's time for us to continue to enjoy the beautiful park in Admirals Hill, O'Malley Park. I remember vividly when they put boulders there, that was the first campaign, La Correativa, on the, we created a green space and recreation committee to fight, because we wanted that park to remain for the residents of Chelsea. It's a beautiful neighborhood, we want to keep it that way. Once again, we don't want to, we are not saying no to good jobs and good-paying jobs and good development, but not at the expense of the elders, the residents, the people that have built Chelsea, the people that have stayed behind paying taxes to make the city a better city for all of us to live. So please reject this project. Once again, when we look for good projects, let's make sure that we are addressing the economic needs of our community, but also that we listen to the voices of this community. And this is, if there's anything that I have taken very, very, I have had always in my 36 years in my career, very proud of our Chelsea, is the democracy, the part that when we speak out, people listen, and our community members are respected, treated with dignity and respect for the contributions that we all make, and these individuals here don't deserve any less. Muchisima gracias. Thank you.
Kyle Umemba.
My name's Kyle Umemba, I am from 38 Addison Street. I'm just speaking from the perspective of just a citizen in the community. It seems like there's a lot of the arguments and the conversation. First of all, we're speaking about Chelsea, Massachusetts here, with the highest unemployment rate in the Suffolk County, right? So just to start with that basis. With that being said, I have seen that this company has a 20-year history, three acquisitions, no incidences, right? So I do understand the environmental argument. Now, with that being said, if we do look towards development in the future and what that looks like, it's under the right guidelines, restrictions, and making sure that that's ensured on a daily basis. That means that new development will have to follow the EPA regulations and new regulations that are set, so it kind of looks like the development would be following these new standards that we fought so hard for before. Overall, my opinion is, this conversational argument comes with the viewpoint of the rose-colored lens of Admirals Hill compared to the rest of the community, personally. And what I mean by that is to say it's better there, when the community has the highest unemployment rate in Suffolk County, right? But it's better down the road, or it's better in this part, or it's better on Heard Street, or it's better on this part, that doesn't make sense to me as a citizen in this community. That doesn't add up. Now, we talk about the noise, we're in Chelsea, there's crime everywhere, noise, like, I wish, I'm trying to speak to everybody, I don't know how to do this, to speak this way.
No, you speak here.
I have to speak to you guys. We speak about the noise, we're by the airport, right? Like, we speak about the environmental problems and issues that we're facing, we're under the leverage of Tobin. Like, the issues that we're speaking of are so from one perspective and one-sided, and it takes into perspective this small area, which is a great area, it's peaceful, it's beautiful, but it's not representative of the entire community. That doesn't add up to me, the numbers don't add up. You gave great numbers on what the population of Admirals Hill are, what's the population of that community voting? Why are you guys out right now? That's only 46 to 170 votes out of that 17,000, that's less than 3%. This doesn't add up to me, this doesn't make sense to me. I understand where you're coming from, I hear the argument and I listen to you, but what I'm saying is, to put it at the expense of the community or say it's better here, better there, very much comes from a perspective with rose-colored lens of Admirals Hill. That's just how I feel. I appreciate y'all coming out here, and I appreciate you guys fighting for what you believe in, but I'm just going to say my opinion and rest in there, so have a great day. Thank you.
So that was the last name on our list, is there anybody who hasn't spoken, who hasn't spoken who wishes to speak? You, then you. What's your name, please?
Yeah, my name is Craig Murphy, I'm over at 50 Boatswain's Way in Chelsea. Thank you so much for this opportunity. You know, I didn't have a prepared speech so much, but I was writing a couple of notes, and one of the things I was thinking about is that if you do an affirmative vote on this, you might effectively kill that building. Because I don't think that you're going to want to go through this process again. And I think originally the idea was bring a BP here, and then we're going to possibly bring other people from the seaport over here. I don't think you folks are going to want to go through this process over and over again. So now you've got three-quarters of this building that could perhaps be dead if you can't find people who would want to be next to these people. So if you don't feel comfortable about that, you might not want to be comfortable about the other things that everybody brought up here, the legal flaws in this whole process, the fact you didn't talk to the abutters. The fact that our place, that street Commandant's is a private way in some circumstances that Jerry brought up, that there are better ideas that Suzanne Perry brought up. Multiple counselors coming here and saying that they've changed their mind. I just think if I was sitting in your position, I might say I'm just a little uncomfortable. And as one of the counselors came up here and said, "Look at your neighbors, these are the people you're talking about putting this plant here, look at them, read those letters." You've got, I mean, John, you've read, you've read, I don't know how many dozens and dozens of letters, and it was like 500 signatures. How many people do you need to hear from? Before you say maybe, maybe this is a bad idea, listen to your neighbors loud and clear, just as that counselor said. Thank you.
Thank you. You can pick it up, or else just pick it up.
Thank you. That's much better. Hello, everyone, thank you for being here, and thank you to Admirals Hill.
Name and address, please.
Melinda Vega, District 2 City Counselor, I reside on 116 Clark Ave. First and foremost, I want to echo my colleagues and apologize for our oversight and allow us to rectify our mistake. As a city counselor and mother raising my children here, I understand the importance of economic and workforce development for our city, and that many of our families could benefit from new employment opportunities. However, the way this proposal has been brought forward raises serious concerns, particularly around transparency, lack of community input, and actual benefits promised to Chelsea residents. This process has lacked meaningful community input. Decisions of this scale cannot be made without the voices of Chelsea residents who will be most impacted, whom we've heard on multiple occasions, including tonight, which are in clear opposition. Also, it's super alarming, the narratives that differ. We were told the project would bring 100 to 200-plus jobs, but in recent communications from Green Roots, it mentions up to 130. And relocation with job transfers, which one is it? If we are to accept additional burdens on our community, the benefits must outweigh the burdens. They must be real, substantial, and consistent, not inflated numbers depending on who's being addressed. And quite frankly, we should no longer accept environmental burdens in Chelsea. Chelsea is already an environmental justice community with more than its share of industrial burdens. Adding a facility that requires this level of trucking in operations near residents is unacceptable. Air quality, traffic congestion, and quality of life must be prioritized. I ask myself, why Chelsea? Is this company relocating from, why is this company relocating from the seaport? We must ask, why leave there and why choose Chelsea? Are we being targeted as the cheaper, easier option at the expense of our residents' health and well-being? We deserve economic development that uplifts Chelsea, not development that brings additional environmental burdens. Chelsea deserves better. We deserve transparency, honesty, and investment that benefits our people without harming our environment and sacrificing the quality of life of our residents. Let's focus on economic development that brings jobs and protects our community. Anything less is a disservice to the people of Chelsea. I urge you to make the right decision and vote no, and deny this special permit, and stand in solidarity with all of our residents. Thank you.
Is there anybody? Nope. You'll get your chance, Mr. Barteroff, I promise.
Hi. My name's Beth McDougal, I am the President of Chelsea Chamber, and I'm here tonight to remind everyone, this is a zoning meeting, and zoning, that's all it is, with regards to special permits. So, I'm also an architect, so I'm here on two different levels.
Could you give your address, please, for the record?
I'm sorry, what?
Your address for the record.
I live in Charlestown.
Yeah, I still need your address.
Oh, Four Woods Place, Charlestown. So first off, I'm here as President of Chelsea Chamber to promote business, that's what the Chamber is about. This particular business that everyone is concerned about, which has a very small amount of the fish processing. The fish processing is my understanding, as was presented, the fish come and they're already gutted, so there aren't ventricles and things like that roaming around. As an architect, I know that there are state rules and regulations that are in place with regards to energy, with regards to mechanicals, and fish smell is not one of the things that will happen here, because as they said, they're putting in a carbon system, but also the new state rules and regs, and Chelsea has opted in for the energy code, which also increases the reason that they will not have any fish smells in the area. So I just want to remind everyone, it's zoning, it's not a personal issue, it is zoning, and we do want businesses in Chelsea, and this business is just as good as any other business in Chelsea, or any other business in Boston, or wherever. We need businesses like this, we need businesses of all levels, and that will employ people from ground-up to CEOs. And so I'm in favor of it, thank you.
Elizabeth Toussignan, 160 Commandant's Way, Chelsea. I have one thing to say. Many of us have driven to the seaport, have visited the site of this fish establishment. When it was closed, I have been there on a Sunday, it smells of fish. Let us not, I am tired of hearing, "This is not going to smell." It smells, and it is going to continue to smell. So let us disavow ourselves of this notion that their fish doesn't smell.
Well, now, excuse me, now that I need to, could you please spell your last name for me? I apologize. Ma'am? Could you spell your last name for me, please? Thank you. Sir?
Weyusi Tafawa.
All right, you're going to have to spell that one for me.
And Tafawa, T-A-F-A-W-A.
Thank you.
I'm in favor.
Your address?
Oh, 53 Breakwater Drive.
Thank you.
I rise to speak in response to, not the last speaker, the speaker before, the penultimate, I suppose. The question was not about jobs, the question is, this meeting should not be taking place. We should not have engaged the zoning appeals board, because there are places in Chelsea already zoned for fish processing. And all we're saying to the board is, there's no need for you to rezone an area which does not require rezoning, so that we can accommodate one fish company that then brings in all the other fish companies. We raised this question at the planning board about the alternative zoning areas available to the company. And the company in response said, "We looked at those facilities, the only problem was the ceiling was too high." And I'm saying, if the ceiling is too high, I suppose the ceiling here, I would submit, is too low. So I'm saying to the board, in simple terms, I mean, this is simple. By their own admission, there are alternatives in Chelsea, so jobs will stay in Chelsea. The question is, there's no need to engage the time and energy of the zoning appeals board, because there's nothing to rezon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else before we give Mr. Barteroff his second bite? Sir? You're up, one minute.
One minute.
One minute.
I don't know what's up with Admirals Hill, I don't know what is that attitude towards Admirals Hill. Have you been there? No, no, not yours, I'm sorry. Yours, anybody who's against Admirals. Have you been there, have you walked around? It takes a little bit to realize, these row houses, they're not so many, and all of the other houses, they're not so freshly built, that they kind of smell and they're all. Do you know how many elderly people live out there, and how many people on Substate, and how many poor people live on Admirals Hill? You don't, I have a question about the process, because every time we advance this through the process, we question it, like in the beginning, they would say, "There would be no detriment to the city," okay, I can guarantee there'll be no others, and then some committee passes the decision, and then nobody comes back to ask them again when we question their decisions. Are we losing our minds? Like, when I questioned the traffic, when they said it's 2% only, did you come back to them to ask, "How much is on Commandant's Way?" No. What about the time of operation? Did you come back? Okay, now they changed it. Distance to the building, when they said 400 feet, did you question? It's 260. You never questioned them back. The wind study, I proved in another meeting, you didn't watch the meeting, there's so much information. The wind study is wrong, the wind, they're talking about this way, I can talk about it, but like every time we advance through the process, and you make a decision, you don't go back and say, "Hey, all of these people posed all of these questions, can you answer them?" And we never get the answers, and we just keep this winding road. And it's our opinion that the proposed facility will not be used. Well, apparently it's used, I've been thinking about this for nine months, and it already is ruining my mental health. And when I talk about health, it's not about the breathing, mentally, we're going insane. Thanks.
Anybody else who wishes to speak on this? You can have one minute.
Thank you. I forgot to add this, I personally walked around and spoke with many numerous businesses around the area. Everyone did not want this, unfortunately.
Say your name again, just for the record.
Eddie Gaffney, 100 Commandant's Way. I spoke to all the businesses surrounding this building, across the street, everywhere. Everybody did not want this, unfortunately, they were all afraid to publicly say so due to city retaliation. That's what they told me personally. And I agree, this is a zoning issue, right? Finally, zoning dictates design, and this design clearly is not allowed for this site. This is zoned a divided lot, see my red line right there? It's a divided lot, zoned. It's a divided lot, zoned, a divided lot. This is not allowed in a divided lot. Use your own zoning rules to deny this application, and we could work on something better.
I just have two things to clarify. One is, our signatures on our petition are up to 967, it's not 500. So that's 967, and we've had about 500 people to these meetings. And the one last thing I would say, if there's no odor, why are we talking about wind direction? Thank you.
I just have a simple thing. Amy again from 120 Commandant's Way, and I did owed... Forgot his name, the one that came back up. Where's the Health Department? This is a serious situation. If this is like, this is environmental, we have the zoning here, we need to have some environmental analysts here, and we need to have the Health Department here. This is a hazard. This is more trucks into Chelsea. And when I fought that Boston hides in furs, we won that battle. We had the Health Department there. We clashed with them. They were there. So why aren't they here? This is the zoning, the final appeal to this, but where in the hell is the Health Department? We went up against them. We had tangos with them, and we won. It was in violation. The smell was toxic. That is cock as furs of a cow. And we're going to have fish? We know fish stinks. It smells worse. And then we're going to have meat and pork? I never know about the pork. Pork is another thing. People don't even look at pork as meat. It's ridiculous. So where's the Health Department? Or all, like you said, I give him kudos. Come on. Where's the Health Department?
One minute.
Speaking under the same premise as I was earlier. Board members often assume they are protected by broad legal immunity, but that protection applies when you act in good faith within the limits of the law. In my opinion, if you vote yes tonight after being shown this evidence the 77 day late, abutter lists the batch fabrication, the missing certifications, the inflated error rates, you are voting without jurisdiction. And when a board acts without jurisdiction, the immunity weakens. The decision becomes void from the start, and the members themselves can be named in appeals or oversight findings. That is a tremendous personal risk to each of you. This is no longer just about Boston provisions. It is about whether you want to tie your names and reputations to a false record, knowing the protections you usually rely on may not hold. Thank you for listening to my opinions.
Thank you for the threats. Anybody else who wishes to speak?
My name is Jennifer Hassell. I live at 131 Orange Street. Most of you probably know me over the last four years with my current role, but I'm coming to you as a citizen of the community. And I want to remind everybody what Kyle Lumumba had to say, because I agree with a lot of the points that he brought up, and this has nothing to do with my role. This has to do with me being a citizen of this community and making sure that all voices are heard in this community. I too have spoken to a lot of people and residents in this community that are for this project. I completely understand and I sympathize with the concerns that people have in Admirals Hill. I want to add that I worked for 30 years in supply chain management. So some of the concerns that you guys have regarding some of the effects that are going to be in the community, there are laws and regulations against that now, that weren't in place when these companies that you're referring to were here in Chelsea. A lot's changed. I understand, and I really do sympathize, but I think we need to take the personal aspect out of this and look at this as a whole, and remember that the city has over 40,000 people in the community. And I understand that 3,000 residents, 1,700 petitions, 700 signatures, policies or procedures that may or may not have been followed, but at the end of the day, we need to look at this as a whole, and we need to remember what Kyle had to say. Those statistics and what he shared was outstanding, and it really made an impression on me, and I really hope that you guys remember what he had to say. Thank you.
Anybody else? This is the last chance. Okay, closing the public part... I'm sorry. Come on.
It's been a long night. My name is Marlene Jennings, and I live at 33 Breakwater Drive. I wasn't really going to speak tonight, which is really unusual for me, because I always have something to say. So what I want to address is a little bit of the elephant in the room. We have heard, and it makes me feel terrible, that we on Admirals Hill think that the business shouldn't be here because we're on Admirals Hill. That's not it at all. I've lived here for 26 years. I've worked tirelessly for the Salvation Army, for the Chelsea Cultural Council, the Admirals Hill, the Friends of Mary O'Malley Park, St. Paul's, St. Luke's Church in Boston. I want the best life and equality for everyone in this city. We don't want this particular fish factory in Admirals Hill because they changed the zoning.
Talk to me, not to us.
They changed the zoning. There are other areas that your city councilors have already mandated that are effective places where a business like this would be and would not disrupt the city, or the people, or the neighborhoods in there. It has nothing to do with who lives where. It has to do with the fact that you changed the zoning to put this in an area of the city that should not have this. We have nursing homes, we have apartment buildings, we have schools, there are other industrial areas, and that's where that should be. So I want people to know that are here tonight, because we were accused of this last night. And it made me feel really bad, because we do not feel that way. We are one city. We are one Chelsea. We're all here for the same thing. We want to raise our families. We want to live in a clean neighborhood. We want it to be safe. We want to be able to go to our homes. We want to get out of our driveway, either walk to the bus, walk to the business, drive your car, and just live a healthy, happy, peaceful, safe life, all together as one. And if you noticed, who stood up for us? Who stood up for Admirals Hill? We had four, five city councilors that stood up for us. They're in our Hispanic community, and I'm damn proud of that, and I'm damn proud of them. So I don't want people to think just because we live in Admirals Hill, we think we're better than everybody else, because we are not. We are one person, we're one group of people, and we are all Chelsea.
Anybody else? Anybody else? One minute.
One minute.
One minute.
Want to remind you, you know, some of the words I said yesterday, the council, representing the whole city, District 1 through 8 and 3 at large, representing the whole city. This is not Admiral Hill's issue. This is a city issue. And when you have the body that represents all the people in the city, mention that we'd like to step back and put a 300 buffer zone and prevent this project from going at this location. It's a whole city issue. So it's not just Admiral Hill's here speaking. And if you consider that to be the case, you're completely neglecting everybody else who's speaking here on behalf of other residents. I represent the district of Chelsea that has the most, probably 80 to 90% of all the businesses in Chelsea. I support businesses. I, in fact, created a program for new entrepreneurs in the city of Chelsea. I want jobs here. But I want to take care of the residents first. Thank you.
Sure? No, I mean, I realize, I mean, if anybody's saying this at this time, okay. I'm going to close the public participation portion of this hearing. You guys want to talk about this? Do you have questions, Marilyn?
Well, I just wanted to see if we should respond to some of the comments that were made.
Well, I think, which, well...
Or if they want to respond to some of the comments that were made.
Well, I, well, okay.
Should we respond to the comments, Nick's comments?
A number of the comments are things that are outside our purview, so I don't, I don't know.
You've closed the public portion. If you allow them to speak, you must open the public portion again.
Madam Chair, may my clients have a brief opportunity to respond to what some of what was said and make closing remarks?
Then I would have to open the public particip... Then I will reopen, but then if I reopen the public participation portion, I will also give everybody else an opportunity to comment on what they say, and they will get another minute on that. I mean, obviously, you have every opportunity to speak on that. I just want to be sure that, that then therefore the people who are here, who hear that, may want to respond to that. So I want to be sure that they're aware of that. That's an equal participation, participation.
That's fine.
Okay. Then I'm going to reopen the public participation portion of the hearing, and I am going to give the petitioners a chance to speak, and at which point I will then give anybody who wants to respond to that another minute, unless they say something, unless it requires more. But let's just assume that we will hear what they have to say, and then I will, we'll figure out, we'll respond. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I just want to express my sincere gratitude for everyone, the city of Chelsea, members of the board, residents. This process has been extremely difficult for everyone. You know, this is, I reminisce very similar to the day-to-day of running a business. It's, you're confronted with difficult decisions on a daily basis, and I understand the gravity. I never anticipated that our application for Boston Provisions at 100 Justin Drive would generate such strong interest and emotions, but I also recognize that this passion reflects the pride, people in the neighborhoods, and the commitment to Chelsea's future. I respect that deeply, and I want to reassure you that the same care for this community is at the heart of how we intend to operate at 100 Justin Drive and why we want to be part of the fabric of Chelsea. From the very beginning, our approach has been one of openness and collaboration. My partners and I have personally presented at multiple public zoning and planning meetings. We hosted numerous tours for city officials, including members of the planning board, zoning board, and city council. It has been clear to all of those who have taken the time to visit our business that Boston Provisions is the gold standard as it relates to standard operating procedures and employee satisfaction and environmental impact. Our doors have always been open to the Chelsea community at large, and specifically the residents of Admirals Hill. We have answered emails from concerned residents transparently and expeditiously. We have even attempted to meet in person with residents, including Jerry Jennings, the president of the Admirals Hill Homeowners Association, to encourage a collaborative process. Regrettably, members of the Admirals Hill community have denied all of my attempts and requests over the last three to six months to meet in person, to have an open dialogue, to experience the inner workings of our business, rather than spew subjective thought. Abutters have continued to approach this in a combative manner, one that is one-sided narrative versus a collaboration, which is what we intend to be in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to... One minute, sir. And again, I know who we are, but say your name for the record.
My name is Jerry Jennings. I live at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. I'd like to respond to Mr. Monents. He did call me one morning, and he said that he understood that this was now becoming an issue not so much between the residents of Chelsea and Wool's Fish, but more about the process that the residents were experiencing with regard to expressing their views to the city and to the zoning board and to the planning board. He did offer to sit down and say, "Is there something we could do about the roads?" Well, he's a tenant. It's the owner of the building who could be inviting more tenants if Mr. Monents pays a little bit for the road, but more businesses come in with bigger trucks.
But then that's not him. I mean, that's, that's not him. I mean, I should respond to what he said. I mean...
So he, he, yes, he did reach out. I said, "I will think about it." We were cordial. Thank you very much.
Jane, one minute. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't say, I'm sorry. No, wait, next.
My name is Suzanne Perry, 160 Commandant's Way. I think we're talking about apples and oranges here. We keep talking about legal issues, how this will affect our lives, how every day will be different for us, and they keep talking about what great people they are. Those two things can coexist. They're great people. They don't belong in our neighborhood because our neighborhood is densely populated and because there's a lot of stuff that's endemic to their business that is just not suitable for a place that has a lot of traffic, a lot of sick people, a lot of people who moved into a building 20 years ago that was not there before and didn't realize that the zoning would be changed, so now 150 apartments are going to be chit-chatting with the business that it was never meant to be. So I don't understand. Great people, not the point. The point is, this business does not belong in an area that wasn't zoned for it to begin with and still doesn't belong there. Thank you.
On the issue of Admirals Hill being tunnel vision, it's not tunnel vision. Admirals Hill is the only residential community in that corridor in Chelsea. Everything else was burned down at the big fire in 1973, so that is the residents of that area. And I also want to just, I read this earlier, and this was in the Chelsea racket on Boston Provisions Case Continued. And once again, Michael Garrity, who is the founder of Boston Provisions, what he said was, "The voices of the few dissenters do not represent the views of..."
You already said that.
I know I did. I'm just pointing it out again, because he's saying that he's been trying to talk to us. The point of that is he hasn't listened to us. So you can't talk to somebody who's not listening. That's my opinion, all right? So he said that, but then he went on to say about how they could just take it over by right of industrial tenant without any public reviews. Once again, I don't think he wants to listen to us, so I'm going to, I'm not going to apologize for having said it once. I'm just rebuttling on what was said earlier. So once again, it's not tunnel vision. We are the only residential community over there.
Okay. Okay, now I'm going to close the public participation portion. Please don't threaten us again.
I wasn't threatening. I was just stating my opinion. I speak under the same premise as earlier. For the record, Mr. Mahoney recused himself from this matter on July 1st, according to the meeting minutes, yet he's still here. And I remind the board that Boston Provisions, the applicant before you was a financial sponsor of the Chamber of Commerce Gala this summer. The chamber also received a $100,000 grant from the city in March of 2025, when the applicant is sponsoring the same chamber that is receiving city funds, and when members of this board are connected to that chamber, the appearance of conflict appears to be very strong. This does not look good, and I urge you to weigh these facts carefully before proceeding. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it? Closing the public participation portion. We're done. John, one question I had that was raised, and many of the issues that were raised were beyond the purview of the zoning board. So it's not that we don't hear them, it's just they're not for us to decide. So I'm not going to get into the Health Department or any of that kind of stuff, because that's not our purview. What I did have a question about was the issue of the road. Is that road a private road?
It may be a private road, but if the abutter has access to it, they have right to drive their trucks up to their access point.
Okay, so that's, so, all right, all right. But I just wanted to...
Yeah, I mean, you have moving trucks going up there, you have delivery trucks going up there.
No, no, I just wanted, but I just...
It's not just all trucks, but if that truck has a, has to get access to a place that has access off that road, then go up there.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's, I don't mind talking about some things, but no. No, we're done. We're done. Public participation is over, sorry. I'm not opening it again. I'm not. I'm not opening the public participation again. I asked, we'll ask the lawyers to deal with that part. That was just a question that I had based on what I received from him, and I'm, you know, I wanted to make sure it's duly and properly looked at. Okay, so, a couple of things that we need to look, we're looking at a... Okay, so, couple of things that we need to look, we're looking at a special permit. We're looking at two special permits. Specifically, we're looking at one for the use, and we're looking at one for the, the location of the docks, the loading docks in the, excuse me, in the hospital district.
In the naval hospital.
Naval, yeah, okay. We're going to talk through about each of the issues around which one, each of the requirements on special permits. So we identified six requirements. Unlike, unlike a variance where we have to vote on each one of them and agree that all of them have to be found, we don't have to do that here, but we do indeed to talk about each of the criteria themselves. So, they'll be social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. We heard from the, from the department. They shared with us their written information. So let's talk about that. And everybody make sure that you're green so we can have a conversation. Thank you. Okay. So what are the, does this, does this, does this serve a social, economic, or community need? I think so. Yes.
Yes. Are we discussing?
Well, we're, we're discussing, or we're saying? I mean, we, some things require discussion. I'm, I'm opening it up. I mean, there's not--
Well, there's the economics, and then there's the community need. We've heard from the community, and then, I'm not quite sure how you would put in the social aspect of it. I mean, one of the things that I've heard a lot from the community is their concern for odor. And having been down to the, their facility on the fish pier, yes, the fish pier is stinky, but their particular building, I couldn't smell. I was just frozen because it was so cold, but I couldn't smell any fish.
Okay. Marilyn?
Yeah, I mean, dealing with, as a former city councilor, you know, in the district that I represented, you know, we dealt with a lot of environmental issues. And when I was like the, the city councilor, we did fight, you know, issues with Boston hides and furs and eastern minerals, and, you know, we worked a lot with the constituents in those districts. And, you know, they fought really hard because, you know, there was odor issues, traffic issues, a whole bunch of different issues, you know, and we, we worked hard with the constituents to make sure that eventually they, they moved, they left. You know, so I find it really important to like be able to like listen to what the community wants, you know? Some of the comments that were made here today were a little bit upsetting because, you know, it's like, okay, we don't, we don't want it here, but it's okay to have it over here in another area of Chelsea. So that, that was kind of upsetting to hear, because I feel like, I think it was Marlene that, that stated, you know, Chelsea is one. It's an entire community, and we should represent everyone, not just a certain neighborhood or population. You know, I think it's great that, you know, they want to provide jobs, you know, to Chelsea residents. I would, I had hoped that perhaps maybe it would have been open to a lot more residents. I should, I had the same experience with, with Joe. You know, we went to the, to the facility, we looked at it. I mean, the place was spotless. Clearly, it was in the Seaport District. You know, when you, when you arrived, it did smell like fish, but once you entered the facility, you know, and you toured it, you know, everything was clean. It didn't smell, you know? And, and I don't know if they were, just did a really good job to clean and impress us. I don't know. Or if that's something that they do every single day. Perhaps I should have done a surprise visit, you know, later, you know, months later, weeks later, or whatever. But I didn't. But what, I was impressed by the fact that, you know, they keep everything very clean and organized, and, you know, there wasn't any issues with odor. Mind you, the facility that they have in Boston is a lot smaller, you know, in comparison to what they want to do here in Chelsea. But I feel like, you know, they're doing what they need to do to be good tenants, you know, in, in the building. So, yeah, you know, I think it's great that they, that they want to come to Chelsea, you know, and develop in Chelsea. There's a lot of companies and corporations that want to come to Chelsea. Chelsea's a great place to be. It's a beautiful city, you know, but we have to also take into consideration, you know, what the residents want. So, and it's hard being in the zoning board, because, you know, we listen to everybody. We're open to listening to what everybody has to say. I'm a Chelsea resident. I've lived in Chelsea my entire life. You know, I've seen how Chelsea has, has had its ups and downs and, you know, all the changes that have come into the city, you know, and I want what's best for Chelsea. I want what's best for my family that lives in Chelsea and for all the people that I know that live in Chelsea. So, but the fact of the matter is that with the zoning board, we have to abide by the zoning laws, you know? So we have to make sure that the people that come before us, that sit before us, are meeting those guidelines. So yes, we do take into consideration everything that you guys say, you know, and we understand what you're saying, but we also have to abide by the law. So, yeah.
I think, you know, and again, I think I agree that this is a, this one, we might come back to that criteria. I think this next one is--
Oh, your mic's off.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Could I speak on that as well?
Sure, of course.
So in terms of one socioeconomic and community needs, I think that the community has spoke, but I think Wolf Fish has spoke as well. And I think this company's due diligence, honesty, and impeccable reputation speaks. And I think in terms of socioeconomic and community needs, I think they spoke to truck, in terms of jobs and economic workforce development, I think that they're going to really improve our community. And I think that when we speak to One Chelsea, as one of the speakers stated, I think that we have to think about what a letter I read, and thinking about if a campaign shifts the burden of environmental justice from one Chelsea neighborhood to another, that does not reflect our values. If residents are saying not in my backyard, but rather put it in another neighborhood in Chelsea, then that goes against what we believe in and have fought for over the past 30 years. So I just speak to the Admiral's Hill folks that spoke. I respect you for coming out and voicing your statements, but I think that this company is going to be good for the community in terms of economic growth, and they spoke to how they are willing to work with the community. So I think they've met, number one, and I think that it's tough because you always want a nice mesh. And I think that they understand, we're hearing what the community speaks to, and I think it's an incentive to work with the community more, which they have vowed to do so. And as my co-zoning board person Marilyn has said, that we're looking at the zoning, and if it's been allowed to be zoned for such business, then I think we really need to honor that. And I just want to speak to the amendment that the council put forth last night. And I just feel like that is no blame to Wolf Fish. I think that is owned by the council, and I think that, and I might be speaking out, but I think that that really threatens due process in terms of making such a decision this late in the game. And if I, if, I'm upset, because if a planning board and a zoning board is put in place, they're put in place to do their job and to do due diligence at that, but when a council, the folks that run the city change that along the way, that is very difficult to sit here in a volunteer position and tolerate. So I just felt like I had to hear that, that you don't change the game along the way. Thank you.
Okay. Traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. And this is a, this is a business, an industrial area. There's always, there's going to be, even with, they can do without making any zoning change, there's businesses that can go on there, and those businesses will have trucks, and those businesses will be responsible for making sure that people are safe and people are fine. But that's, it's not like we are building a, taking a virgin area and turning it into industrial area. It's an industrial area by right, which means trucks and traffic will come there one way or the other. That's my thought on traffic. I think that's a pretty straightforward one.
Can I ask what Signature Bread, were they going up Commandments Way as well when they were there? Or were they just going through Justin Drive?
I don't know. I go by what I heard, that they were going through Beagle Street.
Any other thoughts on that one? No? Adequacy of utilities and other public services. I think in that case, that, again, it's an industrial area, it's, it's set commercially, and I've heard, we are not in any position to assume that they are not there, that the services are adequate there. They, it won't require additional services from what I can gather.
I agree.
Okay. Neighborhood character and social structures. The use is compatible with the character of the district. Is that what, that's one of the questions. Is it? And I think this is, you know, this is one that really does require conversation, because, you know, it's, you've got two different districts that you're talking about. We're talking about an industrial district. This building is in an industrial district. That's no, that's not a question. That's not--
There's almost like a fence should be drawn, and you say industrial, residential. And this is where the, I think the conflict comes up relative to the concerns of the neighbors and the fact that the location has been not busy for 5, 10, whatever, whenever Signature left. But I, I think that it's important to sort of try to listen to both concerns, because whether this company is approved or not, other companies will be coming in and--
And will be there by right, to some extent.
Yeah. And go from there.
I mean, the meat place could be there by right. That's not even a question.
Yeah. It's basically the fish.
Impacts on the natural environment, including drainage. I don't know, somebody spoke earlier to having to go to the, whether or not they would go to the Conservation District. Again, that's not something we get involved in. That's a whole separate commission, and no matter what we approve or don't approve, if it requires conservation approval, it requires conservation approval. So, right, John? I mean, that's, that's not something--
As conservation agent, I can agree.
Yeah, I mean, so, yeah, so that's, again, it's not, I, I can't, I can't comment or not comment on it. I don't know, because it's not our purview to know. If it's in, if there are require, if, you know, if the Department of Environmental Protection says they can't be there, then they can't be there. I mean, that's, but that has nothing to do with us.
Well, that, that's the same question that has been raised by some of the participants here, in that they're concerned about the Health Department. The Health Department will go in and regulate the atmosphere. It's not our duty. It's, sometimes you don't realize that if something's passed by us, that it still has to go through other boards--
Yeah.
And go from there. So just keep that in mind.
Any other thoughts on that? And then last one, potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services, tax base, and employment. Well, we, we've heard that they will, you know, we've heard conflict. We know that there will be employment. The question, you know, there's some conflicts about what, how much. That's, and I, and I don't think any of us can be clear, which, you know, we can hope that, and as we usually, we ask often, anybody to come in to give Chelsea residents first, first view when they're being hired, but that's not something we can mandate. It's outside any legal authority. But it's something that obviously we would want to think about if we were going to do this. Impacts on city services, I generally, I, I don't know. I don't think, I don't, I don't foresee that. It's not requiring schools. It's not requiring things like that. And so, so I, so I guess in, in my opinion, there's not, and you know, and, and there will be some tax revenue to a place that's now empty. And I can't, and, and you know, and there were some legitimate issues. There seem to be legitimate issues raised about the, the owner of the building, but that again, is not before us. That's not, you know, we, we are not in a position to regulate or tell the owner of the building what he, or they can or cannot do.
And I--
We, we can only respond to the petition that's in front of us. So, you know, it's sometime that's frustrating. It's frustrating to us sometime, too. But we have to remind ourselves that that's, that's what we have to look at. And so--
And I think that more of an impact, I think it's an improvement for our economic uplift in tax revenue, and I think it's an improvement of industrial revive, revival of a vacant property. So I think it's more of an improvement as opposed to the impact.
John, procedurally, are we taking two votes for, do we have to take one for the initial special permit for the use and the one for the special permit for the district?
You are actually voting for two separate special permits, so you could, you could include, you could include in one motion.
But clarify again to me exactly where that line is drawn physically and, and zoning-wise between where the naval, the hospital district is. Like-- I know. That's what I was gonna, but let's see. So that's--
It's not entirely, that's not entirely accurate, actually. It shows a little bit more.
So it's that piece to the--
Yeah, it's a piece to the left.
A slight piece to the left. Okay, okay. That's, I just wanted to be sure that's what it was. Okay. And that's the structure of the building. That's--
Yep.
So do we have an interest in voting on this? Do we have an interest, do we have a motion? Wait, hold on.
Suggest a motion.
Okay, we're gonna, so to make sure. Whoever wants to make the motion, we have suggested language to make sure it's properly done. Who would like to make the motion?
I would like to.
Down at the bottom?
Here?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special permit for the seafood processing use and the special permit for extending the use into the N H C district with conditions as proposed, and to adopt the department's analysis of the special permit criteria as justification for approving the permit.
And before we, John, do we have special, do we have conditions that we would want to impose on that permit?
You do. The standard conditions as applicable. Hours of operation must be limited between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Odor control equipment must be installed. Petition must ensure that all trash and other waste products be stored inside the facility and provide the department permitting and land use planning a waste management plan for review. All trucks and vans owned by the petition must be equipped with quiet backup alarms. Submit to the department permitting and land use planning a road and control plan. Special permits granted will not be transferable, and the planning board recommended the special permits granted shall expire in 2055. The department does not recommend that the board adopt that.
I would also want to add to that the requirement that the, we talked about earlier, which road would not be, the access points that wouldn't be used between 6:00 PM and 6:00 AM? So that we would, they would not be coming through Justin, what, you know, whatever, the proper road. I don't, I don't want to mistake it, but you know what I mean?
Can we, can we block them from going all the way up Commandments Way? Just, you know, they can just reach to like, go up to like--
Justin, and that's it?
--the opening is to the facility and just take that right? Can we do that?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole thing.
Can we prevent like their trucks to go all the way up Commandments Way and like, you know, drive all the way through onto Beacon Street?
To be sure that they-- To be sure that they don't, that they don't go beyond Justin Drive?
No, no, not Justin Drive, Commandments Way. So like the front entrance.
So when they exit Commandments Way, they, the special permit, I'm sorry, the site plan included that they have to put a stop, a sign that says "Left turn only." And they have to put a stop sign, and they have to maintain that berm that's there to slow it down.
So they wouldn't, they would have to go up Commandments only so far as Justin Drive is?
Correct.
Is that what you mean?
Yes.
Oh, you see, you mean coming up?
Commandments Way, yes.
Yes.
So if you're on William Street, do you understand, if you're on William Street and you take a left or a right onto Commandments Way, they can only enter the parking lot for the facility. They can't go straight up past Axis, go through Mary O'Malley Park, kind of thing. Drive around the neighborhood in their truck.
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
So do we, so we have the motion amended with the requirements that we just articulated?
Yes.
And are you...
We're not going to include the 55. I mean, that's, I don't, oh, what do you think? I don't think we should include the 55. I mean, it's sort of a random, they want to be renewed in 2055, is that...
The recommendation was that the permit expire in 2055.
2055?
Yeah.
That's a long time.
Well, it's only...
The board, the department is opposed to it because it's difficult to enforce. It's 30 years from now. Most of us are not going to be here to remember it. And although it will be registered, recorded in the registry of deeds, there have been many times that the board has put conditions that, on a permit that have been registered, recorded in the registry of deeds, and doing due process either purposely or accidentally overlooked.
But I think we can just require that any change to the, but we do do standard things, that any, any, all of the site plans, et cetera, and traffic, not traffic plans, lighting plans and landscaping plans have to go to the department. Is that there? Did you include that?
They have, they submitted that to the planning board at the planning board's request. So they have already submitted that.
Okay, but that was part of the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay, so they, so it doesn't have to go back to the department? And that, how do we ensure that it's specific to the use for this company? Or I guess this, this, well, we've restricted, we've put...
You have put restrictions on the transferability of permits before. I'll remind you, just recently, you had a, the date, the adult take here on Library Street come back here because there was a restriction on it, and they did catch it during due process.
But that wasn't, that was, that's because we did it on ownership versus change in purpose.
Correct.
Right, so, yeah, I guess, I mean, anything that required change in purpose, they'd have to come back to us unless it was by right anyway, by statute.
Correct.
All right. Have a second? Somebody's got a second. That doesn't mean you have to approve it, but you have to second it.
I'm sorry, can we add, like, like, I don't know if the Board of Health does this or if this is, you know, not in our purview kind of thing, but like inspections, like regular inspections of the facility to make sure that they're complying?
Complying with, with what?
Air filtration system, the trash.
It's my understanding that they have to go through those regular inspections.
They have federal requirements.
Federal and state requirements.
Yeah, they said they have an office for that individual, as I understood.
Yes, that's correct. That's right. That's right. Second? Somebody has to second it. That doesn't mean you have to vote for it. By procedure, somebody has to second it.
I second it.
Thank you, Joe. All, Joan?
Yes.
Arthur?
No.
Joe?
No.
Marilyn?
No.
Then I'm gonna go no. Okay. We're done. All right, everybody. Hey, hey, we have a bunch of hearings, so please go and be happy outside.
Leave the, we have more cases.
Go outside. Please leave. Okay, the next case in front of us is 50 Hurd Street, 202508. For special permits and variances seeking approval for the demolition of an existing residential structure and the construction of an educational center that does not meet requirements for minimum rear yard setback, maximum lot size, minimum side yard setback, minimum frontage, maximum floor area ratio, maximum height, maximum lot coverage, and minimum off-street parking spaces. I think Joe recused himself from this, no?
Yes.
Yeah. John, before we do this, we, there are a number of cases, there are two cases that we held in reserve as potentially doing if this, because we want, we're closing this hearing at 10:30. So I'm going to see how long it takes us, and I'm not rushing you, so I don't want you to think I'm rushing. But I will, since it's 9:30, we'll see how long it is before we finish this case. And if it looks like we're going to go beyond, I will, we will just move the other two cases, which are 471 Eastern Avenue and 83 Watts Street. We will move those to next, continue those to next month. But right now, let's, you're up. This is the first time we've heard this. So this is the first time we've heard this, even though you've gone to the planning board. And, John, what do the planning board have to say?
Planning board recommended approval with conditions.
So you're gonna have to present your project to us de novo, okay?
Alex, wait a minute.
How about now? Good, all righty, excellent. So good evening, members of the board. My name's Alex Train. I serve as the chief operating officer for La Collaborativa in Chelsea. I'm joined this evening by Gladys Vega, our CEO, as well as David Gamble and his team from Gamble &amp; Associates, our architecture and engineering consultant on this project. As many of you know, La Collaborativa is dedicated to enhancing the economic and social welfare for all residents of Chelsea. Founded over 35 years ago, you know, the organization has a rich track record of defending communities, particularly in the consumer protection space, ranging from the Telx Free cases years ago to our contemporary work, keeping workers and homeowners safe, as well as aiding distressed tenants, as well as boosting economic development by connecting residents with good-paying jobs and equipping the next generation for careers that are in high demand and come with good pay and good benefits in a highly competitive 21st century economy. So over recent years, this mission has let us scale up our economic mobility and workforce training-related portfolio. We moved into the Survival Center at 63 Sixth Street about two years ago, as you know, and we've rapidly outgrown that space and have realized that the space lacks some of the specialized infrastructure needed for education and workforce training purposes. So about a year ago, the organization acquired a property located at 50 Hurd Street. We retained Gamble &amp; Associates and undertook a robust community engagement process in order to develop a shared vision for the site as a state-of-the-art education and workforce training facility that would be available free of charge for all low-income Chelsea residents, both youth, young adults, and mid-career adults that are looking to get into high-demand industries like clean energy, healthcare, and the building trades. So I'll turn this over to David, who will walk us through our design approach as well as showcase some of the floor plans and renderings that we've prepared for you tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Alex. Can you hear me okay? Again, my name is David Gamble. We are located at 678 Massachusetts Avenue in Cambridge in Central Square. And thank you for your service. You have a very difficult job. I structured the presentation to address the questions that were raised in the inspectional services letter back in April. So I will hit the points that we're asking for, for relief. And the image that you're seeing here is a ground-level perspective of the south side of the Economic Development Center that Alex is describing, which you see are studios facing a little courtyard in between La Collaborativa's two existing buildings. Next, please. Next slide. And as Alex said, so the image that you see here, the aerial image, the new building is essentially on Hurd Street, but that's not the entrance. The entrance is from the south side, from the placita or the plaza that we're creating. And the new Economic Development Center in adjacent to their Survival Center and their Economic Development Center start to form a sense of a campus. This is within a one-and-a-half-minute walk from the Silver Line, transportation improvements, and it really becomes a new center for the nonprofit. Next, please. We see this as both building community and a community building. And it's replacing this, which we actually looked to see if we could rehabilitate. Our first-order business isn't to demolish existing buildings, but the spatial configuration of the house just doesn't lend itself well to contemporary training. I did want to highlight, too, what you see in the images are, the edges of the site are a hard, a wood fence, and then a chain-link fence on the other side. So it is already bounded. And the site also has a curb cut that goes off onto Hurd Street that we're closing off. So actually closing off the curb cut on Hurd Street and turning that alleyway into a walkway, not for cars, but for people. Next, please. We're basing this, through this community engagement, on three planning principles. One, that the new building starts to unify La Collaborativa's other buildings. Two is that it starts to create a center through this plaza, so thinking of the space as much as the building. And three, with La Collaborativa's demographic, really celebrating the culture also. We think there's a great opportunity in the building's expression through the materiality and the massing to do that. Next, please. And we're thinking of this in the context, I'm here with Antonia Medina Abell, the architectural designer. We're thinking about the building and the spaces in the context of Latin American architecture and the feel and the character of that, the materiality. Next, please, the sense that the courtyard itself is actually a space. We're using color to also represent the culture and textures. Next, please. The building itself, as you know, is actually limited quite a lot by the zoning. It can't be a very big building, so we're trying to do a lot with that, even while we create a public space, which infringes upon the site even more, which is why we need the rear yard setback. So it's a fairly austere and simple building. Next, please. And these are the things that we're here before you, about setbacks, open spaces, parking, minimum frontage, F A R, the things that you, in fact, are dealing with on a weekly basis. Next, please. And I'm gonna go through those one by one. The current conditions, again, the building is fairly slender and long, with the parking in the back. Vehicular access goes through the site. Next, please. And so the proposed rear yard setback, because of this plaza, we actually want to have more than 20 feet. The goal is to have a little space of educational opportunity and training that floods currently, which we're reconciling it with new ways to deal with the water. So we need more of a setback than the 20-foot minimum. You're seeing in this plan, Hurd Street is up, the plaza is to the bottom of the page. Next, please. Relative to parking, more than 90% of the students and the staff at La Collaborativa actually come through public transit. And you're seeing in this image, Route 1 is dashed in above, and all of that parking is right across the street. And Alex, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, absolutely. So the organization is entering into a 10-year lease with the Division of Capital Asset Management and Maintenance for about 170 spaces located within these dashed lines. The space right now is used for a combination of the organization's food pantry, outdoor community events, as well as staff and visitor parking. As David mentioned, 90% of our members and staff rely upon either public transit or walking. We principally serve residents of Chelsea, and the vast majority of our employees come from the city of Chelsea. So the site isn't envisioned to generate significant vehicular traffic demands nor parking demands.
Thank you. Next, please. In terms of the minimum lot size, what's required is 10,500. What's proposed is 7643. Again, it is a fairly narrow and long parcel. That's the existing conditions, actually. Next. In terms of the setbacks, so what's required is 10 foot, 5 and 1/2 inches. What's proposed is 8 feet, 9 and 16ths inches. It's a result of the height of the building. You'll see in the massing how we're modulating the massing to fit into Hurd Street and also on the south side. So we are looking for a modest increase in, decrease in that. Next, please. This is the floor plan, and the plan has been rotated 90 degrees. So in the image that you're looking at, Hurd Street is to the left. The walkway at the bottom is replacing the driveway that was there previously, which was 10 feet wide. This is a 6-foot pedestrian walkway. Think of it as a mid-block connection. But the door that then faces Hurd Street is not actually an entrance door. This is an emergency egress door. So the staff, the students, people that visit the building are actually coming from the south side, which is to the right of the image, through the plaza into the building. That's where the main entrance is. It's facing south where the workshops are. And so we're trying to downplay the notion that you're entering actually from Hurd Street. Next? And relative to buffers, so the wood fence and the chain-link fence that are there now, in previous planning board conversations, there was a concern about potential noise impacts, so we're creating an 8-foot wall. That'll be a vegetated wall on the east side, on the west side, sorry, that's the walkway, this is a section. So we're really designing the landscape to take what is basically 100% impervious surface and make it about 60% impervious surface. So the green is actually both to shield and quiet the space, but also as a resiliency measure. Next, please. And this is a view, then, if one's back is at Heard Street and you're looking south towards the plaza, that basically it's 8 feet, but 2 feet of that would be a planted edge and the walkway, which, by the way, transitions from Heard Street down to the plaza level of about 4 and 1/2 feet, so that's why it's a ramp. Next, please. This is an early study model in terms of the minimum frontage. Again, what we have today is 50 feet, even though it's required is 60 feet. It's an urban site, as you know, in many of these dense urban settings. Next, please. The FAR is more than what's allowed. So through the modulating of the massing and the program that we've been given with the workshops, the classrooms, we are asking for relief with FAR. And this is then a small aerial perspective of how the massing is organized through the building. So the south side, again, is more transparent. You're getting natural light in to the workshops. The training rooms or classrooms are to the north that faces Heard Street, so there's less fenestration on the north side, you don't need as much light anyway. And then in the middle is basically the core. So the flex space that you see on the lower left-hand side is basically a large garage door that will open up as a potential flexible space for the organization with the entry lobby directly adjacent to that. The building itself is about 12,000 square feet, 12,200 square feet, and this section here, you see that ramp that negotiates the grade change, the ADA accessible ramp from Heard Street, which is to the left, to the plaza level to the right. In the context, a lot can be done with a step back, not a setback, but a step back, which is at the third floor, we're stepping that back 4 and 1/2 feet. To reference, a lot of the buildings on Heard Street are actually triple-deckers and buildings that have pitched roofs. So you can see in this perspective, looking west, our building is in the middle, and through that step back on the third floor, it actually helps to address the relationship with the abutters. Next, please. And as we just navigate around, this is a view a little bit closer on the sidewalk. Next. Here, again, from the sidewalk. Next. This is looking in the opposite direction. And one more, this is the material palette. So you can see how that step back in combination with a slightly different material texture, we show brick on this portion. Again, these are classrooms behind the building with a metal panel, and the base itself is concrete. So this is an educational facility, it's not a home, and it's also for training, for industrial purposes. So between the reference with Latino architecture and also the notion that this is an industrial educational use, we think we can arrive at a happy medium to have it both fit into the context, but also be an expression of its use. Next, please. So again, in the diagram, what you see here are shops on the south side with the training rooms on the north side. The minimum, maximum lot coverage is 40%, what's proposed is just slightly more than that, at 43, well, really 44%.
Show what's there? I mean, when you said shop, tell me what those different colors represent on the
Sure, so on the top of that image, the training room is a classroom, about 600, 700 square feet, I'm sorry if it's too small. On the south side is the shop, so those are the workshops. HVAC, for example, or carpentry would be another example of the classes. And then the core, the stair tower, the elevator, and the hallway are between those two. So it really plays out as a dumbbell, classrooms with circulation in the center.
When you said shop, I thought you meant shops, like shops. Okay, thank you.
Sure. That's just the summary. Again, in the bottom, you can see it's 12,200 square feet. So we're trying to do a lot in a fairly small site and create a space between it, because it actually helps the whole campus. Next, please. As I mentioned previously, the site does flood. I don't know, Alex, do you want to talk? Yeah?
So as many of you know, the site's on the 100-year FEMA floodplain and is subject to a lot of localized flooding, both during heavy rainstorms and coastal storms. This has been an ongoing issue with aging infrastructure, serving both Heard Street as well as Arlington and Sixth Streets. So presently, the site's served by a drywell, it's effectively a catch basin that routes water into the ground. However, some of the subsurface conditions are not suitable to assimilate water. So it's a lot of clay, a lot of materials that don't absorb water. So as a result, during torrential rains, you see flooding that occurs on all of the surrounding properties in the neighborhood. So something we're contemplating here is to create a plaza space that's intentionally flood-able with rain gardens, different types of green infrastructure, as well as as much impervious surface as possible removed. As David mentioned, right now, the site's 100% impervious surface. We're looking to at least reduce that to about 60% by adding the remaining 40% as green space or permeable porous area. And so we're really excited to, you know, utilize this stormwater scheme that would have an underground detention basin that would capture stormwater, and then during periods of heavy rain, that basin would fill up as a holding tank and eventually be pumped out via a pumping system to Heard Street, which, again, is upgrading by about 4 and 1/2 feet from the project location. So during times of fair weather or, you know, light rainfalls, this tank won't really fill up too much, it'll automatically route out to the street. But we believe that this combination of increasing the holding capacity, adding a pumping capability, as well as introducing green infrastructure can help alleviate a lot of the flooding that is occurring both on this site right now and could be an achievement that others could use in the neighborhood.
And in the next image, you'll see that's what's there today. The space in the foreground is about half the size of this room, to give you a sense of scale, this plaza. Next, please. And in this rather abstract drawing, the blue lines represent we're channeling the water from the drains on the roof to feed the garden on the bottom of the image, so that's where the water is providing a performative role. Beyond that, when it is a severe flood, then that's when the basin will be triggered, and that will be the reservoir for heavy rains, which would then just discharge out to Heard Street. So we're scraping out the plaza, we're scraping out the driveway to make it lower so that the rain drains into the buffer area there. And this is a view of what that might look like. This is still very conceptual, but we're gonna use native grasses, it'll be very colorful, we think it'll be a beautiful space, a quiet space. We see it as a garden, as a contemplative garden. It will be a pass-through for students going between the Survival Center and the Economic Development Center. Next, please. This is another view, there is a ramp, an ADA ramp that comes down because of the lowering of the elevation to get these slopes to work, so we have included a little ramp there. Next, please. Lighting will be all full cutoff, we don't want this to be very bright. In fact, the zigzag lights, when we were here three weeks ago, the planning board, you know, thought that may not be appropriate, and we agree with that, we're gonna take those lights away. This is not a festival marketplace, it's actually intended to be a quiet, contemplative, elegant space, and we'll treat it as such at night. And here are some examples of the bollards, the full cutoff lights, and minimum lighting on the trees. There was a healthy dialogue, I think that was my interpretation with the planning board about the aesthetic. We don't want to shy away from the fact that this is a contemporary building, and we're using interesting materials in innovative ways. We think that's consistent with the program and with the culture. There's lots of good examples of where to do that well. Next, please. So this is a photograph of the materials, the metal panels, and I think the next slide shows the brick that we're using, which is azul, kind of a bluish, rich blue color. And the two actually go very well together, although this image is a little confusing because you're seeing the carpet of our central square space below the metal panel and the brick, but we think it'll be quite elegant. Next, please. And in aggregate, then, the metal panel together with the brick, and there is a large surface that's mostly solid because it faces the Silver Line, this building can actually be seen from a distance, and on that solid area that's on the second and third floor, we're gonna use a very interesting tile configuration that is an interpretation of La Collaborativa's logo, and that will be kind of a sign, a beacon at night that can be seen from a distance. And with that, we'll open it up to questions. Thank you.
It can be seen as a beacon, how is it gonna impact the houses nearby? We don't want it to be a beacon into their window.
It would be a beacon to Route 1A, actually, because it could only be seen, you know, when you're up there, but it won't be, it's not an art installation.
Okay. And additionally, it's not an illuminated, you know, artwork. As David mentioned, we're proposing a tiling scheme that would look really elegant, sophisticated, but again, not overpowering. Everything from the lighting plan to the landscape buffers, we've tried to deliberately think through on how can we craft this to minimize neighborhood impact and make sure that this is compatible and harmonious with a lot of the surrounding residential properties.
Questions? Marlene?
Okay, so this is to hold workshops and do training, so what would be the hours of operation and how many people are expected to be visiting this property on a daily basis?
Absolutely, great questions. So in general, we're envisioning hours of operation that run from approximately 10:00 AM in the morning to about 8:00 PM in the evening. The organization hosts a number of evening educational classes like our ESOL, as well as workforce training programs like HVAC and weatherization, in order to make sure they're accessible for working families. So we believe that we are able to strike a balance by, you know, terminating classes at 8:00 PM with some of the needs of the surrounding neighborhood as to not disrupt any of the surrounding abutters. In general, the space is envisioned to hold somewhere around 100 to 150 people at full occupancy across the six workshops and classroom spaces. But in actuality, there'll be very rare occasions where the building's operating at full capacity. Generally speaking, we run classes in the morning hours, we have a break in the afternoon, and then we segue into evening classes, and it's really that evening period that runs from about 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM when everything's the busiest.
How many, what days? I mean, five days a week, seven days a week, six days a week?
This will be five days a week, Monday through Friday.
And there's no parking there, right? I meant, you showed the garage, but there's no cars parking in that garage, in that space?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
How many staff?
So presently, the organization has approximately 45 full-time staff at our Survival Center location, so this facility will sustain approximately eight to 10 new staff positions. And that's both full-time and part-time.
And there won't be office, there won't be other, other than offices directly related to this operation at that location?
That's correct. So the only real office type of use that's envisioned for the space is on the fourth floor, there's a conference room slash flexible area that we imagine could be used for meetings as well as some administrative work. But otherwise, all staff that'll be supporting the facility will have their offices in our Survival Center, and there are no other office uses proposed in the facility.
Any questions? Before we get started for the public participation portion, I'm just taking a poll, how many people are here to testify on this? Please, show me a raise. I know, I know we have, I know we have one, Mr. Contreras, but so, I can't see, so how many people? Total? Okay, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an assumption that we can potentially hear the, at least the driving school. Okay, so, I'm opening the public participation portion of this. John, does the planning board have, the planning department have a recommendation?
Planning board recommends approval with the following conditions, the standing conditions is applicable, private issues of building permit petition must participate in a design review with the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning with consideration by the Chelsea Historical Commission. Petition must install white or green roof, submit to the Department of Permitting and Land Use Planning construction period road control plan, remove the table and benches from the parking area in front of the main building.
You guys feel comfortable with those requirements before I open it up? Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this, Mr. Contreras? Is he still here? Nope? What? Okay, but I'm assuming, I'm not going to limit your time, because I'm assuming it's not going to be, I don't see a large number of people, but please be kind enough to keep it to five or six minutes at the most, okay?
Thank you.
And if it goes beyond that, I will set a limit, so, so let's not do that.
Thank you. Okay, my name is Jaceni Alfaro, 12 High Street, and as a resident and currently representing district in the schools, and running for City Council large. I would say that's something that we had always dreamed in our communities, having a center like this. I don't know if so many of you might remember Centro Latino, Concilio Hispano, you might remember also Choice Through Education, where young adults had classes, young adults would have development, and then we had Banker Hill Community College that would also do it, right? But then, we have the issue of young adults that don't wanna go to college, or people that have careers, and we see the hope. I'm a pro of La Collaborativa, so I highly speak and recommend these programs. Learn English through them, went back to college through them, and I can see a lot of the members in our community benefiting by having these programs and the flexibility of the two schedules. So I do respectfully ask for your reconsideration to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Hello, my name is Jamil Nieves, I live in 21 Karma Street. I stand before you, not just as a student, but as someone whose life has been transformed by the opportunities this community has provided. I come from a background where income was low, where life was harder than it needed to be, but through our programs here, I was able to grow my income, I was able to grow my income, improve my living conditions, improve, and my hope for the future become real. That is why I believe La Collaborativa Training Center in this zone is not just a project, it's an investment in our youth, in our families, and in our community. Change doesn't start from outside, it starts from within. And when we give our young people a place to learn, to grow, and to dream, we're planting seeds of change that will ripple throughout generations. This school will be more than walls and classrooms, it will be an addition to La Collaborativa, an organization that already stands as a pillar of service, helping families with medical insurance, legal aid, foods and goods, English and computer classes, HVAC and carpentry training, and professional development. With a school added to this foundation, the impact will multiply, it will directly reach our youth, offering them education, stability, and opportunity where they live. I am living proof of what happens when a community invests in people. If it can change my life, imagine what it can do when we extend that opportunity to every young person here. Let's build this school together, because from within this community, we can create something powerful, something lasting, something that changes lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this?
Hello again, my name is Marlene Jennings, I'm at 33 Breakwater Drive in Chelsea. I have to tell you that when I read about this potential new opportunity at the collaborative, I was so excited. I cannot tell you how wonderful I think this is for our city. I'm very impressed with the design and all the thoughtful things and details for the building and for the people that will go there. building and for the people that will go there. I think this is, will be life-changing for multi-generations that will be going there. And I think, I'd love to see this as a model for the rest of the country, because I think we are heading into a time where AI is scrubs that people with college educations have. And those people that will survive and do very, very well will be the people with trades. And this is a wonderful, wonderful opportunity. I strongly support this for the city of Chelsea. Thank you.
Name and address.
I'll be incredibly brief. Kelly Garcia, 135 Washington Ave. Tonight, I come before you not as a counselor, but as an educator. I've taught for 10 years, and every single student over the last 10 years have advocated for something like this in their city of Chelsea. Countless of students have cried to me, Ms. Garcia, we need like a northeast in the city of Chelsea. And this is it. It's here. And so thank you for, for engaging in this conversation, and good night. Okay, I know it's been a long night, so I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wishes to speak on this?
I apologize. I really didn't know a lot about this, but I do know when I-
Name and address.
I'm sorry. Rhonda Wyner, 100 Boatswain's Way, Chelsea. But when I, when COVID first hit, I'm going back a little ways, I got my first mask from La Colaborativa. And I've bought many since then. So this sounds fabulous. I want to go to school here. Thank you.
Judith Garcia, 27 Breakwater Drive, for the record, state representative, and I am here in support of this project. I will say that La Colaborativa has served as an example of a great organization that is a model at the state level, and so much so that there's actually earmarks to support workforce development initiatives just like this one. So I think that this center of opportunity, economic opportunity, is exactly what the city is looking for. It's exactly what the Commonwealth is looking for, because in order to be a more competitive Massachusetts, we need to make sure that the next generation is prepared in the trades and in jobs that are fast-tracking to get people what they need, jobs, economic mobility, and the opportunity to have a secure future for their families. So I am in full support, and I'm hoping that you can support this amazing project. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Eddie-
You can lift it up, it's probably easier.
Hello, my name's, hello, my name's Eddie Gaffney. I would just like to agree with Marlene. I agree that this is a great project for the Chelsea. The design's beautiful, too. I love all the thought that they put in there to make the really, the indoor/outdoor spaces a great learning environment for the students, so I'm in favor of this.
Marchesa Codoni, resident 325 Commandant's Way. I also stand in strong support of this, this project for La, of La Colaborativa. It's a vital investment in the future of Chelsea. It offers real hope for working families, and it has shown, La Colaborativa has shown care and commitment. They have listened and worked to address community concerns. Approving this permit means saying yes to opportunity, and we're all for opportunity, as you saw us earlier today. It means helping neighbors build better lives, so thank you for, for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy, and I'm from 120 Commandant's Way. And this is like the second meeting I've came tonight. Well, I've been, I can't even think, I'm sorry. I'm in 100% favor for the La Colaborativa. I think it's a great thing that we're doing here in Chelsea for the trade. We need more trade. I prefer, if I did have a young son, I would love for him to go to La Colaborativa. I think it's great. College is not for everyone, and we need people in the trade, and I'm so happy to support this, and I hope it goes forward, and I think every young man should be invested in, and woman, into a trade. It goes well. And you're, hi, family. My family is in for the trade. I'm from Missouri. All my brothers have their own business in the trade. Their phone never stops ringing. I need a plumber. I need a electrician, so I really support all of you and-
Manuel Tasse, 188 Broadway. I just want to say, when we put it in perspective, there's nobody else in this city that is investing this amount of money to do this kind of project to prepare our next generation to be leaders in the future. And so please, make this happen. Nobody else is doing it. Allow the people that are putting it forth to make it a reality. Thank you.
My name is Suzanne Perry, 160 Commandant's Way in Chelsea. And I have to say, as a longtime educator, I am so excited right now. I think this is one of the most important things that can be happening in Chelsea, and the blend of the inspiration of this building for these young people to be in this creative space while they themselves are creating. I think it is an exciting, exciting thing, and I really thank La Colaborativa for being at the forefront of making a real difference in the future of Chelsea. So thank you.
Hi, Milagros Barreto, 104 Johnson Street in Lynn. I'm here today, I'm staff, but I started going back to La Colaborativa back in October last year as an OSHA instructor. I was there to give the certification for the OSHA card to workers that need that for work, and students. And I can see, I'm witness of how life will change, and we're still changing lives, giving the opportunity for women to be, to get the CPR, so they can become, and they can go and work in, as a nanny's or in children's places and all that. So I'm very humbled to be part of La Colaborativa right now, and we are, we open doors for everyone. It doesn't have to be only immigrants, Latino immigrants. We, our doors are open for everyone in the community, and I'm witness of that, so thank you for this opportunity, and I hope you consider this project.
I'm going to take a slight pause here. I think we're not going to be getting to those other two cases at this point. So I apologize. I would like a motion to continue cases 202, wait a minute, let me guess, 202512, 471 Eastern Ave, and 202513, 83 Watts Street, to our October meeting. May by Joe, Arthur, second?
Second.
You go, all in favor?
Right.
Okay. Sorry, so you guys, if you're here for that, you can go home. Is there anybody else who wants to test try on this one?
So my name is Clarice Vega, I'm the president of La Colaborativa. And one of the things that inspired us to do this project is when we sued the vocational school, the Wakefield Vocational School, for their admission policy. And we felt that many of the young people in Chelsea applied for vocational school, and because of the admission policies, they're so rigorous, they were not able to get in. So for us, it was very, very important to do a vocational school. And then we thought, if, you know, if adults can come and practice and learn in the morning, then young people can do it in the afternoon, vice versa. For, for me, as a person that grew up in the city, from a mother that had alcoholic's problems and that I had to come to school for breakfast and lunch, and not miss lunch just because we didn't have those two meals during the day, for me, it has been very, very important for us to create opportunities for job and development. The city of Chelsea and the residents of Chelsea and the youth and adults of Chelsea don't have to be comfortable about being poor if we give them the skills for them to acquire those skills and be able to be about a better position, a better profession. And through this effort, that's what we're trying to build. We're trying to build a community that uses only public benefits for those type of emergency. I want to be able to say that in Chelsea, our young people, our adults, if you want to change a career at the age of 40, and you're not comfortable in getting paid $18, $18 an hour, but in your country you were a plumber, you just don't have the license, why not be able to take advantage of that? I don't want us in the community of Chelsea to continue to be saying, oh, you're the poorest community in Massachusetts, etc. I want people to know us for being resilient, for being able to stand up and believe in what we're doing, and to be able to, as a community, to come together for the betterment of each individual economically, for them to be able to strive for success. I know that college is not for everyone. I know that for a fact. I made it my business to make sure that every young individual, if they're not going for higher education, at least they have a choice. The people that, you know, in the, in the police department, I've made it my business to recruit as many people as the police department so that they can have the good-paying jobs. Fire department, the same. I have worked always to make sure that we grow together as a community, and that economic opportunity is the way to go through education, through, if they don't decide not to go to college, at least they are able to use their hands and get into the building trade. You know, the weatherization program is a perfect example. One time, I come from Boston, a meeting in Boston, I see a group of young people, and I swear, I profile, I'm like, oh my God, what are they doing? Are they fighting? Because, you know, the, the high school student used that path, they're underneath the bridge to cross over, and I see all these, these young people there, and when I looked at, when I got closer, as I was getting out of my car, it was our weatherization program, all these young people with their professors taking a look at how they weatherize at home and practicing. For me, that was a, that's a reality, a dream come true, and that's what I want for every member of our community. I want them to strive for success. I want us to be that city where working very, very hard pays off. Muchisima gracias. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who wishes to comment on this? There being none, I'm close, all right.
Let me say something. I don't know if anybody spoke about-
Name and address, please.
Svetlina Baderov, 325 Commandant's Way. I was so excited. I don't know if anybody spoke about artificial intelligence. It's, the most important moment is happening right now, and it's going to take us a very long time to figure out how to make the robots do things for us in the physical world. So all the knowledge workers, our jobs might go away tomorrow, and that's, that's a real threat. Only the people that have a real skill are going to thrive, and they're the most important people. I don't know how to frame this, like, you don't need a college education, we need people to fix stuff in our physical world, and I deeply appreciate this initiative. It's fantastic.
I'm closing the public participation portion. We have variances we have to go through. You have to meet each of the four. Oh, I'm-
So was this heard? Is this the first time it's been heard?
We've heard it, sorry, it's gone to a plane.
Oh, so you-
It was reversed because of timing.
Oh, okay.
So the planning board sought it beforehand, and so they voted together.
Oh, so we vote on it. It's, you all vote on it tonight? Okay. Yeah, so I just had a few comments, and I think that workforce development is at the heart of our community and absolutely necessary. And I stand by your organization, La Colaborativa, in terms of advocating for workforce development. But at the same time, and we, we vote on each and every case individually, but the last case in terms of workforce development, it didn't seem as important in that space. But looking at this space and thinking about workforce development and creating a place for that, and thinking about our housing and the state that we're in for housing. So just thinking about, it's a great plan, but I don't think it works where it's at for 50 Heard Street. And I say that because to demolish a two-to-three-family home that could potentially be restored to house families that are being displaced on a daily basis in this community is short-sighted decision in terms of worsening our housing crisis. So I think about that. I walked by there, I looked at it, and yeah, it's old, and it may be stated as dilapidated, but I think that it has potential, and it has a potential to house two or three families that, in our states, being displaced. So just thinking about, that even looking at the traditional two-stories, because they're predominantly two families on that street, and looking at this structure, and most of them are owner-occupied, and proposing for a four-story structure that, in the context, not only disrupts the character of the neighborhood, but undermines the sense of community that makes this area feel like home. So thinking about incorporating a school on a residential street and area kind of undermines the community, as in the former case where there was a strong concern with undermining the community in terms of a facility built out there. I just think that La Colaborativa has other alternatives for building this youth development center, such as on Broadway where the youth development center is, the Survival Center, the Economic Development Center, or even the outdoor plaza space. So just to be conscious of community and housing and where we don't have enough of it, and our own residents are being displaced, and we all believe that housing is a human right, just thinking about the space that you guys currently have, and thinking about building out that space for a, for this workforce development center, I think would be great. I think it's a wonderful idea, but I just think in terms of taking away housing and building this facility in that space is my concern.
Joan, I agree with you. The issue, though, the board is only voting on the variances, not on the use. They're an educational, they, as an educational institution, they have, they get to use what, they get to do what they want to do with it by right. And so we're voting on the variant, the size of the building, not the use of the building.
Okay, so the size of the building, which is the four stories, correct?
Right. So basically, any of the variances there, the size of the building, you know, whether the, whether it's too close to the edge, you know, whether there's an affrontage, with any of those variances, we have to deal with.
Okay, but in terms of it fitting into the neighborhood, or the structure of the housing outside, now the two families, that's not what we're voting on.
It's not, well, I completely agree with you, it's just not what we, we are in a position to consider.
Okay.
So we're going to walk through the-
Oh, sure.
Whatever signage, they don't need to have signage on the facility, in the building?
In a residential district, they're allowed one sign to identify the building.
But I don't see in the presentation, the signage.
Do you want, do you want?
We do not intend to have any signage on Heard Street, because we don't want to give an indication that that's a point of entry. The south side, this tile mural, in some ways, represents a sign because of its coloration and its placement on the building. But beyond that, we haven't, we haven't shown any specific building signage yet. It would be minimal, if, if at all.
It would have to be, if it's, this is approved, it would have to go through the planning department.
Yeah.
Any signage would have to go through the planning department.
Also, I think he said that the building won't be at his, the building full capacity? Is that right, for the students?
No, I appreciate the, the point of inquiry. There are very few times where the building will be operating at full capacity. You know, we estimate it'll be equipped to handle roughly 100, 150 people, and this is all subject to eventually an occupancy permit from, from ISD. But only during our busiest peak hours of 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM would it accommodate that large share of people. Other hours of the day would accommodate a much smaller share of people.
So if that's the case, why is there reason to have that such high building? It won't be all the time in a full capacity?
So we're building, that's a great question. So we're building out the classrooms to really accommodate anywhere from 20 to 25 students. Most of our classes, though, particularly during the morning and any afternoon hours, operate with smaller class sizes, around 10 to 15. It's really just those evening classes that operate with larger class sizes. But most importantly, this facility op- But most importantly, this facility represents an opportunity to acquire and operate specialized training infrastructure. And so, it's really the infrastructure that, that we're focused on. As many of you know, HVAC training, plumbing, as well as electrical require laboratories, workshops, and equipment that costs hundreds of thousands of dollars that we don't necessarily have the specialized space for right now with respect to ventilation, placement, as well as some of the engineering factors. So, that's really the, at the heart of why we're designing this, the way we're designing this, at the scale that we're designing it.
What, what, what day is the, is the food pantry? What day?
So, our food pantry operates on Wednesdays and Fridays, and then on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we provide neighborhood distribution through our mobile farmer's truck.
What time, what time during, what time does that happen, the food pantry?
Sure. So, on Wednesdays, it operates from about 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m., 2:30 p.m. And then on Fridays, it's generally from 9:00 a.m. to approximately 12:00 p.m.
Not in the afternoon?
Only on Wednesdays, it operates in the afternoon.
What time?
It operates around 12:00 p.m. to about 2:30 p.m. on Wednesdays.
Not in the evenings?
No, no evenings.
John, even though, so part of the special permit is that they need parking, and they don't, clearly, and even though they're entered into an agreement, that rental agreement, though, while it's something we can think about, it's not something we consider in any formal way, because that's not something that's directly associated with this permit.
Correct. In order to be counted as part of the, of the parking, you know, it has to be within 300 feet and owned by the.
Right. So, it's a nice, it's a nice, it's a nice little aside, but it's not really something we're considering at all. We can't, we cannot formally consider.
Right.
Okay.
How about this snow removal? Was, any plans for a small, snow removal?
Great question. So, we would apply our existing standard operating procedure for snow removal, which consists of a full-time facilities manager and facility support staff that manually shovel and remove snow in the pedestrian areas, augmented by an external contractor that we hire each season to provide support during larger snowstorms. So, no snow would necessarily be stored on-site. We generally will have either the contractor remove the snow, or we'll have it stored along the edges of the Survival Center parking lot or the Route 1 parking lot.
Or they just won't go in the yard.
That's correct, yeah.
Is the same for the trash?
Yeah. Trash was a matter of interest to the planning board, as was the loading and unloading of materials. So, the plan calls for a dumpster to be situated in its current location at the Survival Center property. Additionally, there are larger format dumpsters available across the street underneath Route 1, again, on leased property, so we recognize it can't be considered for zoning purposes, and waste is picked up approximately three times per week by an external contractor.
Is any reason why there's a shower in the first floor?
That's a great question. So, we offer showers in all of our restrooms across the organization's buildings. And this is for a multitude of reasons. You know, first and foremost, many of the young adults that we serve don't necessarily come from stable homes. They don't have access to bathroom facilities, breakfast, lunch, dinner, and those basic necessities we, we all take for granted. Secondly, we expect that a lot of folks will wanna shower after they finish training, just given the physical nature of the training. We'll also have lockers available on the first floor for personal storage that the students will be able to use.
No cafeteria, won't be a cafeteria in the building?
No cafeteria. The plan does call for a small kitchenette on the first floor, along with a second kitchenette on the fourth floor. And you could picture that almost like a kitchenette you'd find in a typical office setting or a city hall setting that would have a microwave, coffee maker, refrigerator, and some, some dry good storage for both staff and students.
John, can you put the criteria up for the plan? Do you have something?
I have.
Good, good.
Sorry, okay. So, there's no parking in the, in the property. So, is, are the classes gonna be open, the workshops gonna be open to just Chelsea residents, or is it gonna be open to youth from other cities, surrounding cities? And what's the parking situation there on Heard Street right now? It's only on one side. So, if people commuted to the property, where would they park?
Those are.
Underneath the bridge?
Those are both great questions. So, around 80% of our programs exclusively serve Chelsea residents, and that's both from a mission perspective, as well as a condition of the funding that the organization receives from both local, state, and philanthropic entities. For certain programs, particularly state-funded programs, we are required to accept students from the larger catchment area of Revere, Everett, Lynn, and East Boston. But again, 80% are Chelsea residents, and the expectation is that they would park underneath Route 1 if parking is needed. Heard Street, and I don't recall exactly the extent, but a portion of the surface roads bounding the site are encompassed by an all-day resident-only parking zone in order to deter parking because of the Silver Line Station. But right now, you're, you're correct, there's parking on one side of the shoulder of Heard Street.
Okay. And then, have we received any opposition from the abutters?
An abutter did show up at the planning board meeting and discussed issues relative to noise and privacy, and they've responded with a higher fence for the privacy and to block some of the noise.
If I may, we've also thickened the wall section, so it's now, we have a drawing in the appendix, but it's twice the width of a typical wall section to address the concern about noise. And if I could, regarding the height, just to refute the notion that this is a four-story building on a two-story neighborhood, the bulk of the homes on Heard Street are actually three stories. And in fact, the elevation change from north to south is five feet, so the building is actually half below. So, it's really three and a half stories with our step back. We actually think the, the massing works pretty contextual.
Okay. I'm just, I'm just concerned about like the amount of people there on a daily basis, especially being like right in the middle of two residential properties, kind of thing. Hopefully, the property is very well insulated, not just the fence, but, you know, the property itself is very well insulated. So, if there's workshops being held there, it's not a nuisance or disturbance to the, to the abutters, kind of thing, especially if classes are happening in the morning or late at night, kind of thing.
What, what kind of, so what kind of restrictions do you think we could put on something? I, I agree with you. I think that, you know, you don't want somebody grinding on a machine shop at night when they're next door to a house.
John, if you could, if you could bring up in the appendix, I will just show the section without getting too technical, but it's a great question, and I think between the hours, maybe the next slide shows there, so the thickness of the wall is twice the thickness of a standard two-by-six with insulation. And even the glass itself for the workshops, we've specified as a triple-pane insulated glass. So, I think it is gonna be a pretty quiet space, even though these are mechanical carpentry workshops and HVAC.
Let's go back to the variance criteria. We have to go through each one of those, and then we'll go through this special permit criteria. Okay, you know, and with regards to the variance, you have to answer in the affirmative for all of them. Their variance is sought because of soil, and the variances in this case are for lot area ratio, I know, yeah, lot coverage, what are the, yeah, give me the list again. Minimum lot size, minimum side yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, maximum lot coverage, maximum floor area ratio, minimum frontage, maximum height. We'll take them all to get collectively, we're not gonna go through each one separately, but it's a number of variances that you're gonna need to talk about. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape with topography of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structure, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
So, in this instance, the variance is primarily sought due to the topography of the site with a grade change of about four and a half feet from Heard Street to the rear of the site, as well as the narrow shape of the site makes complying with the underlying zoning infeasible from a structural standpoint and a design standpoint. Moreover, we wanna make sure that we're designing a building that's accessible to users of all ages and abilities. And when we looked at complying perfectly with the zoning, we realized that we couldn't accommodate ADA-accessible spaces, including hallways and elevators.
You go? Yes, no? Joan? Marilyn?
Yes.
Now, I'll say yes. A literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
So, a literal enforcement of the, the section would result in a building that would be financially infeasible to develop based upon our, our budget analysis. And then from a design standpoint, we wanna make sure that this is accessible for residents with disabilities, and it wouldn't be feasible to create such an accessible facility within the confines contributing to the hardship.
So, the little enforcement is more feasibility than it is, I mean, you just could build it?
It, it wouldn't be economically feasible or physically feasible.
It wouldn't make sense. You'd have it about three feet wide.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes. Desirable, desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. This is the easy one.
If we believe that this wouldn't be detrimental to the public good, this would serve all residents, providing economic and educational opportunities, contributing to the public good, and we've done our best to minimize any abutter impacts and neighborhood impacts by factoring and feedback into the design.
Do you go?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
We don't believe that the application of the relief that's sought would derogate from the purpose of the zoning, nor conflict in any way with the future application of it.
And this is sort of, this is the catch-22 a little bit because of the use itself is, is not something we're debating.
Right.
Marilyn?
Yes.
And yes. Okay, you've met the, on the variance requirements. We're gonna discuss the special permit requirements, but again, this, the, it's a little less strict. But the only special permit we're looking at is the off-street parking. Okay, social, economic, or community needs which are served by the proposal. So, the determination shall include consideration of the following. So, social, economic, or community needs served by the proposal. It's, I think it's, there are community needs served by this proposal. I mean, I think that's pretty, that's, that's not. Traffic flow and safety, shall we, you know, we're gonna consider traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. I mean, I think that's, that's the harder one in a way, because there is no parking. How about tra, well, and, well, there's, what do you think? What are the thoughts?
I mean, there's no parking, but my guess is that perhaps a lot of the students that will be visiting will probably Uber, or take the train, or.
And there is parking, it's just not part of this.
Local, kinda thing.
We know there'll be parking, it's just, it's not something that's formally part of this consideration. So, but, well, I think that, I think that's sort of a, again, anything in that area. Adequacy of utilities and other public services, we've heard nothing to, to the, to the contrary to that. Agree? Yes?
Yes.
The neighborhood character and social structures, and I think this, this speaks very clearly to what Joan was talking about, but it's also sort of our, our hands are tied on this one. You know, that it's, it's probably a little bit outside what's, what seems appropriate for the neighborhood, but that's not what we can consider.
Plus, you're recommending the condition of design review.
And, well, again, so it'll be design review, yeah. Impacts on the natural environment, including drainage. I think we did hear about drainage. Yes?
Yes.
Potential fiscal impact, including impacts on city services, tax base, and employment. Well, it's not gonna be much with regard to tax base, because it's not for profit. So, that's really not an issue. Employment, it sounds like we're, it sounds like it's pretty neutral, one way or the other.
And unlike the variance where they have to meet all four.
That's to say, they don't have, yeah, I, I mean, it's something to consider, but it's also something practical that we, sort of what's reality here. Okay, so I think that, I think that they've met the concept of the special permits, the requirements. So, John, what is the, what are the, again, what are the recommendations of the board, of the department with, with regard to conditions?
Department recommends approval with the standard conditions as applicable. The design review, a white or green roof, a construction period road and control plan, and removal of tables and benches from the parking area in front of the main building.
Comfortable with those?
We are, yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve case number 2025-0850 Heard Street with special permit and conditions.
With special permit and variance with the conditions.
Correct.
As articulated. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second, all in. You got that? Motion to adjourn was made by Arthur, second. Second by Marilyn, all in favor.